Rego Native City Council, City of Pearland for Monday, October the 12th, year 2020, and it being at least 6:30 in the afternoon. Moving in our agenda, and I also need to share with you that we're using telephone and video conferencing because of the pandemic, and I think you'll find those very useful and we'll, uh, it works out real well for visibility. Moving in our agenda, item number one, which is called order. Item number two is invocation and pledge allegiance. Councilmember Moore, we need a good pledge, uh, invocation from you. And Hernandez, if you're here.
I'm not here, but I will give the pledges, Mayor.
And you'll do the pledge allegiance.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you had, please bow your head.
Again.
Dear God, we, uh, we thank you for this day. It's a great day today. We thank you for allowing us together here to do the city's business as the residents' business. We ask that, uh, you watch over each and every one of us, uh, our first responders and our military, while they out, while they're out doing their job to protect us. We ask that, uh, you guide us in making decisions that are wise and, um, to the best of our abilities tonight for the residents and for the city of Pearland. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Hernandez, pledge allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
And justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Appreciate you all, uh, sharing what you, what you said to the Lord and what you said to the citizens of America. Moving in our item, uh, agenda to item number three. I'll ask the proteum if he, if we have a, a membership of quota of a quorum.
Uh, there we do.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I certify quorum for this meeting tonight. Moving to item number four, citizen comments. Uh, councilmember Perez, wait for them.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for all those who are speaking, we'll put a clock on the, um, uh, on the screen for you to view. We'd like you to keep it to, uh, keep your comments to three minutes. We do have a long agenda and a lot of items to speak with. We also have several members that want to speak, so if you could do, please do us a favor and, uh, honor the three-minute, uh, limitation. That would help us hear everybody and continue the, uh, continue the meeting in a timely manner. Uh, with that, Mayor, I will call out the names of the individuals who, uh, have communicated they would like to speak, starting with Mr. Dan Brazel. Josh, if you can find that individual.
Dan, you're unmuted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, my name is Dan Brazel, and I'm the Director of, uh, Collection Services for FCC Environmental. Uh, we are one of the three companies considered responsive by the city staff for the new solid waste collection contract. FCC is currently providing services to more than eight million Americans, including four million Texans. We currently operate contracts with many Texas cities such as Dallas, Garland, Mesquite, Huntsville, La Porte, Rallett, and University Park, to name a few. We have also been awarded contracts to provide services for many similar or larger-sized contracts of Pearland, bringing the proven experience of our services for a transition of this size. You have a very important decision to make today for the city related to one of the most important services that a city offers to its residents, which is the model of the future collection system for your constituents. FCC, as the other bidders, was asked to prepare three different possible alternatives, two of them keeping the same collection frequency of two times per week garbage collection, and one of those reducing the service to only once per week. Many of the cities within your vicinity, such as Pasadena, Sugar Land, Baytown, League City, Missouri City, Friendswood, Seabrook, Deer Park, Baytown, and La Porte, all have twice-per-week garbage collection service as you do now. We want you to be aware of the potential challenges of reducing the service to 50% of the current one that your citizens are used to. It would mean that the collection dates would have to be changed to adapt to the reduced service, and the citizens would need to change their habits and get used to the new reduced collection dates. We have seen this change in many other cities, and the fact is that even if the, if it is perfectly organized, it usually leads to multiple complaints addressed from the citizens to their respective elected officials. Citizens don't tend to like reduction in their service or a change in the day that they are used to being serviced. Right now, residential volumes have increased more than 20% due to the people doing more from home due to the COVID pandemic. Reducing the frequency down to once weekly for garbage service is very challenging in the environment we are all living in. For instance, if a resident currently misses putting out their trash, they only have to wait three days until the next service. If going to once-weekly garbage service, the residents could have up to 14 days worth of garbage waiting to be picked up if missing their scheduled day. You should seriously consider if this is the avenue you want to take, because it would last for at least the next five years, so there won't be a point of return once you make such a complicated decision. In closing, please consider all I've shared and think about what is best service model for the city as well as your residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, uh, the next at bat is Mr. Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, are you available?
Yes, uh, Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsino Street, Pearland. Honorable Mayor and City Council. In the city of Pearland today, residents are having a host of water bill issues. We have residents like Veronica Longoria, who gets bills with zero consumption reported from their meters for months, then a huge bill. We have residents like Brandy Lewis, that the city says the meter indicates in two and a half months, she used 2.5 million gallons of water because of a leak, but her yard was dry. We have residents like Lowell Pennox, who leaves for work at 7:45 a.m., and yet city tells him his sprinkler was running from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. She says he doesn't know when his sprinkler ran, just pay the bill. We have residents like Christie Paul Green, who has kids over for a weekend to the tune of nine kids for a weekend. City says you use no water from Friday afternoon until Sunday morning. Not possible. City says she's confused. She had to have been out of town that weekend. The city says the profile report shows hundreds of gallons of water being used in the middle of the night, and that's accurate. You just don't know when you're using water. Residents get a bill for triple or more than the normal amount for a month or two, and magically goes back to normal. They say that's accurate. Pay your bill, and we'll shut your water off. Maybe if you're a councilman, you get a different answer, but we peasants don't. City tells us our new, more accurate meters are accurate up to 25 gallons per minute. Despite AWWA saying water can safely be delivered to a home no more than 20. City tests the meters to test them at 10 gallons per minute. They say that's the AWWA standard. Well, AWWA manual M6 addendum dated November 2018 says all standard meters should be tested 15 gallons per minute, so we ain't even testing our meters right. When we ask them about why we don't have it tested at a higher rate, they won't answer. They say, trust us. Uh, residents getting a little frustrated. Now, when a resident goes to move, and once their service gets disconnected, city makes you check off staying. You're going to pay your final bill, regardless of the amount, by the due date, or they're going to turn you over to a collections agency and report it to your credit. When residents seek answers, we get delays. We get the runaround. Sometimes we even get our rights under Texas law violated. After searching for months to basic questions about the water bill and debacle, how many people complained that made us change policy? And when did we discover the problem? I got with 25 violations of the Texas Public Information Act. After asking for the information that the city attorney said I should have received, but I haven't gotten it for months, I'd say enough was enough and take the matter to the Brazoya County District Attorney. I wish it didn't get this far, but I can't stand by and allow city staff to continue, continue breaking Texas law in an attempt to hide information from residents. What I found is a concerted campaign to hide the information. The water meters are not right. There's too many accuracy concerns. Y'all were told, y'all said previously about commercial meters having issues, so y'all know something's wrong with them. And the problem, you know, it's not a city staff problem, it's a meter problem, but the response is. We need y'all's help to stand up for us. You may not like me, but do it for the other people, because we're getting fed up, and if you won't, we'll get people in place that will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, we have Ms. Denise Hewitt.
Hi, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, name and address for the purpose of record. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, timer's on the screen.
Okay, mine says zero. Denise Hewitt, 3404 Blue Screws Trail, Pearland, Texas 77581. Good evening, council, mayor, staff, and citizens. Contrary to Council Perez's remark offline, I'm on the list, and I will be speaking, and I won't be popular tonight. Tonight's agenda identifies two items, seven and nine, related to waste management contracts. I'm frustrated with the interim waste, uh, rate increase that's on tonight's agenda, and the astronomical pricing of the RFP. In response to these two increases for a vote, I'm demanding that two councilmembers recuse themselves from voting on both of these items tonight or when they are voted upon. Both members, as far as I'm concerned, have a conflict of interest when in October 29, they each received two Astro 2019 World Series tickets and seated in the Waste Management Suites. During regular 2019 season, suites ran from $4,000 to $8,000 without food or without beverage, and I'm sure no cost was spared by Waste Management to entertain their attendees. I can only imagine as a package, each ticket had to have a conservative value of $1,500 to $2,000. I'm placing a no-confidence vote tonight on Woody Owens and Trent Perez. These are the two council members who should not be allowed to vote tonight due to the high-dollar gift value of tickets that they received from one of the largest contractors in the city of Pearland, currently running about $680,000 a month. In addition, there's been a great deal of strain and stress placed upon our citizens during the COVID pandemic. We've watched the number of positive cases fluctuate and cause alarm in our fine city. We have been scared in the light of the life we have mourned and the loss of fellow Pearlanders. Businesses have shuttered, others are marginally operating. Workers across spectrums of all jobs have been laid off or terminated. Unemployment's still high, but our city continues to grind along as life is normal, seeming to be oblivious to the strain its taxpaying citizens are under. I find this to be most egregious. I'm quite disappointed that so many water bills are out of control. Citizens and alarms are falling on deaf ears. Late fees, we told, weren't going to be enacted are now being discussed. People who are moving out of Pearland are now receiving letters of termination agreements that say that if they don't pay by a given date, they're turned over to a collection agency. This entire water billing debacle stinks, and it sits the feet of a city executive responsible for issuing the directive to change the bill so 13 billing cycles could be realized, adding additional base rate charges to the city coffers. What a short-sighted fundraising effort that's turned out to be, but no one in the city has paid for this debacle. Two positions, um, were identified to be terminated, but they, uh, retired. One did, the other one's still working, collecting a comfortable paycheck. Budget items are all approved, nothing deferred or canceled to save funds, and we're going to go ahead and increase our trash. But we're going to allow elected officials to continue to improve increases that are being the norm in our city council. Marie Antoinette is alive and well in our city hall. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next, Mr. Jeff Punkiel. Are you available?
Yes, sir. Jeff Humpley, 3912 Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas 77581. Um, tonight, I'd like to offer a suggestion. When any construction contracts are listed on the agenda, oftentimes councilmen always ask if there are any subcontractors associated with this contract. If these are consent agenda items, they are pulled, and council needs to spend additional times discussing the same issue over and over again. In order to expedite meetings, I kindly request having all subcontractors listed on the provided construction documents to allow council to have all information upfront. Next, I'd like to address Waste Management's desire to increase their base rates. Their argument was due to COVID, people are at home and generating 9% more garbage. On the flip side of that, businesses have closed, which stopped their garbage altogether. I think the garbage just switched location, and maybe even less is being collected, so they are trying to boost their profits in a struggling economy. Let's talk about their existing profits and focus on the recycling bins. They list the new bin costs $65.69 and a monthly charge of $1.82, which means the bins would have been paid off in three years. This program was put in place five years ago, so anything collected after the first year, three years, is pure profit. Why doesn't this charge ever go away? On the subject of recycling, is there any measure of how much our waste is actually being recycled? Also, does Waste Management make any money off this process, which could further increase their profits? I met with a citizen this weekend, and they said they've seen their recycling get thrown into the same trucks as the trash on multiple occasion. I just want to verify if have a recycling program be used to the fullest extent. I've heard councils say they hear from citizens, and they want to do what's right by them, but during the last meeting, when this item was brought up, many of the councilmen said they were for the increase. Now, when I bring up adding a dollar charge for people who wish to receive a paper water bill, Councilman Hernandez says he spoke to some seniors on a fixed budget, and they can't handle this additional charge. Yet, when the base rate comes up, it seems easy for them to allow it, but this increase will end up affecting everyone. I set up a poll on social media, and 91% said not to increase it. I bet not only a handful of seniors were polled for the $1 idea, so why are you considering this one? There is another agenda item being discussed tonight to select the solid waste collection option, and Waste Management is ranked three out of the three companies being considered, and the top-rated company is $1.8 million cheaper. Therefore, with all this information, I strongly request all members to vote no to this increase and allow Waste Management to make any pricing adjustments when they are competing with the other companies. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, sir. We have, uh, Jared Aquina or Aquina. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. Are you available?
Yes, Gerald Aquino. Gerald Aquino for, uh, 3202. Hello?
Yes, sir. If you can, please keep your name and address for the purpose of the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Gerald Aquino, representing my client at 3202 Wagon Trail Road. Uh, we're trying to, uh, change our, our zone from, uh, RE Residential to, uh, OP. Uh, this project would benefit a lot, uh, to the city of Pearland in terms of economic growth and job creation, and we are just here to give, uh, more insights or get your comments regarding the project, and that's just, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Nick Moda. Mr. Moda, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Moda, if you can please keep your, uh, state your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Sure. Uh, great. My name is, uh, Nick Moda. I'm here on behalf of Deborah Simpson, who is the property owner at 1636 Max Road in Pearland, Texas. We are here on behalf of a zone change application in front of the city council this evening, Zone, uh, Zone 20-0005. I don't have not much to add beyond just to say that I'm here in case there's any questions or concerns. I'm happy to address them. I will stay online through the time where you'll discuss that specific agenda item in order to answer any questions if you might have them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor, that's all of the public comments we have. Um, uh, I think we're ready to move to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Moving in our agenda, item number five. Public hearing, uh, one of, one of two public hearings. I'll ask, uh, Mr. Hardy if he'll read the purpose of the public hearing and to do the staff review.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is Joel Hardy for the public's sake, and others that may not be familiar with me. Uh, I'm the grants administrator for the city of Pearland, and will be presenting tonight's, uh, slide presentation on, uh, three allocations that we are scheduled to receive from the, uh, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These three allocations are comprised of one that is a typical annual allocation of funds that we receive every year as an entitlement jurisdiction of HUDs, and two additional ones that are being presented to the city for planning and implementation purposes for the sake of response to coronavirus, um, and the CARES Act. So tonight's presentation is basically going to be an introductory, uh, overview of the program, those allocations, and give the public and, uh, council an opportunity to, uh, get the initial information, uh, related to these programs. Uh, just, uh, for the sake of, uh, information, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Program is one that was authorized via Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act back in 1974, and its purpose was to, uh, provide decent housing, suitable living environments, and expansion of economic opportunities. Uh, those funds are delivered to entitlement or participating jurisdictions throughout the coun, the country. Um, these are cities that are over 50,000 in population and counties that are over 200,000 in population. And in using these funds, uh, these entities must, uh, meet HUD national objectives. Um, the funds can be used to remove some in blight, uh, address low to moderate income issues, or to address urgent needs in the community, uh, such as disasters and major, uh, natural catastrophes. Uh, one thing we probably never talked about in these slides, but I'd like to get a little bit more, uh, information out, is how we actually receive the allocations we do, and one of my objectives over the course of the next, uh, fiscal year is to become more and more familiar with that. Um, this year, we, we kind of, uh, at least wanted to make sure that the public was aware of the formula allocation methodology that the city falls under. There are two that are used to provide CDBG, uh, method of distribution, uh, Formula A and Formula B. Formula A is based on the population of the jurisdiction, the number of people in poverty, and the number of overcrowded housing units. Formula B is actually the population growth lag since 1960, the number of people in poverty, and pre-1940 housing units. Um, because Pearland is a relatively newer city, if you will, and has very little, if any, 1940 housing units of, uh, significance, we fall into Formula A. So that's the formula that HUD would use to determine our allocation for the regular CDBG program or any other programs that we participate in funded by HUD. Uh, just to give you an idea of what the historical CDBG funding has, has looked like, uh, we've, of course, as I've mentioned, received an annual allocation of HUD funds, uh, as well as, uh, two, um, uh, special allocations. Uh, one is a disaster recovery allocation back in 2009 in response to Hurricane Ike. Um, a small portion of funds went to, uh, upgrading generators on lift stations, and in 2009, we also received a small stimulus package from HUD that allowed us to respond to the, uh, uh, economic exigencies at the time related to the downturn in the economy. In total, uh, prior to 2020, we have received, uh, $4,823,205. Right now, for fiscal year '21, we have allocations that involve the regular CDBG program, uh, where HUD has, uh, calculated that we are to receive $428,160, which is fairly consistent with the current year, or actually FY20's allocation. Uh, and we've got two others that have been issued via the CARES Act that still come directly from HUD, and those are, uh, our CDBG CV1 allocation of $251,873, and our CV, um, other CV allocation in the same year, uh, which was issued separately for $443,583. Both of those second allocations of coronavirus relief funds from HUD must have a nexus to COVID-19 and also serve, uh, HUD low to moderate income, uh, concerns. In total, we have $1,123,616 to plan for. Just to give you an idea of what the potential priority activities would look like, um, we have an option, uh, we actually have opportunities that are, uh, tied to our current five-year consolidated plan, and some of the priorities that show up in that plan involve helping neighborhood centers, senior centers, uh, centers for the disabled, uh, investing in flood range improvements, sidewalks and street improvements, code enforcement and housing rehabilitation, uh, which we've been doing for the past four or five years, and also, uh, mental health services, which we have funded and, and continue to fund at this day. Um, we, uh, with the two stimulus allocations, will also be responsible for using those funds in ways to, uh, respond to coronavirus response, relief, and recovery efforts, and some of the ideas we have in mind for using those funds involve, uh, subsistence payments, uh, helping with the community's, uh, unmet needs when it comes to the local economy of facing residents, uh, senior services, uh, food delivery is seemingly be a very important issue and a concern, and, uh, also support for COVID-19 medical and our public health expenditures that meet HUD regulations. Uh, speaking of those, there are a number of rules and regulations that we need to abide by when we use these funds. Uh, most of those are captured in 24 CFR 570. Uh, the CFR is the Code of Federal Regulations, and that's primarily where the rules and regulations exist for every agency distribution of funds when it comes to the federal government, and, uh, it's 24 CFR 570 along with the others. And in 2009, we also received a small stimulus package from HUD that allowed us to respond to the uh economic exigencies at the time related to the downturn in the economy. In total, uh, prior to 2020, we have received uh $4,823,205. Right now, for fiscal year '21, we have allocations that involve the regular CDBG program, uh, where HUD has uh calculated that we are to receive $428,160, which is fairly consistent with the current year or actually FY20's allocation. Uh, and we've got two others that have been issued via the CARES Act that still come directly from HUD, and those are uh our CDBG CV1 allocation of $251,873 and our CV um other CV allocation in the same year, uh, which was issued separately for $443,583. Both of those second allocations of coronavirus relief funds from HUD must have a nexus to COVID-19 and also serve HUD low to moderate income uh concerns. In total, we have $1,123,616 to plan for. Just to give you an idea of what the potential priority activities would look like, um, we have an option. We actually have opportunities that are tied to our current five-year consolidated plan, and some of the priorities that show up in that plan involve helping neighborhood centers, senior centers, uh, centers for the disabled, uh, investing in flood range improvements, sidewalks and street improvements, code enforcement and housing rehabilitation, uh, which we've been doing for the past four or five years, and also uh mental health services, which we have funded and continue to fund to this day. We, uh, with the two stimulus allocations, will also be responsible for using those funds in ways to respond to coronavirus response, relief, and recovery efforts. And some of the ideas we have in mind for using those funds involve uh subsistence payments, uh, helping with the community's unmet needs when it comes to the local economy of facing residents, uh, senior services, uh, food delivery is seemingly the very important issue and a concern, and uh also support for COVID-19 medical and our public health expenditures that meet HUD regulations. Uh, speaking of those, there are a number of rules and regulations that we need to abide by when we use these funds. Uh, most of those are captured in 24 CFR 570. Uh, the CFR is the Code of Federal Regulations, and that's primarily where the rules and regulations exist for every agency distribution of funds when it comes to the federal government. And uh, it's 24 CFR 570, along with the others that I've listed here, are just some of those that we have to make sure we comply with when using this money. Not very many people realize this, but the Texas Government Code also has a uniform grant management uh regulation, and that's in uh Chapter 783. Most of those rules, however, coincide with the federal law, so we don't have too much to do as far as coordinating between the two, but we want to make sure that we reference those when necessary. Um, the CARES Act rules will also apply to the use of these funds uh in many ways, so we'll want to make sure that we are uh coordinating our HUD regulations with the um Section 601D of the Social Security Act. Uh, for more information, uh, people can go to hudexchange.info, which can give uh anybody who's interested a plethora of information about HUD and the use of CDBG funds. Finally, I'd like to go over some of our planned next steps. Uh, these are subject to change, uh, but for the most part, we've laid out a calendar of activities that we anticipate going through to plan for the implementation and use of these funds. After tonight's public hearing, we will have an initial public comment period that will allow the public to provide information uh to staff about their um interests, where program implementation priorities are concerned, uh, the kinds of things that the community may want to see happen with these funds. We'll, of course, have to vet those for eligibility, but uh any input we receive from the public is greatly appreciated. Uh, we would like to host a council input discussion session on the 26th at the next regular meeting uh to get council feedback on the on our priorities, and also hold a second public hearing on the 9th of November to wrap up the citizen uh participation element of the planning process. Our plan is to uh complete the CDBG and CDBG CV action plans by November the 27th, uh, post those action plans up uh for the for the public to have a five-day public comment period. Uh, just to let you know that five-day public comment period is there because HUD has provided uh some relaxed rules as far as our planning process to expedite getting these funds out to the public, and therefore has um uh through a CARES Act system of waivers, allowed us to have a reduced public comment period, and council acted on that in uh June of this year uh to allow our citizen participation plan to change in that regard. Um, so after that, we will provide council and staff and stakeholders with an update uh on uh December the 3rd and via a Thursday memo, and uh after the completion of that five-day public comment period, uh, we will make the revisions necessary to be able to come back to council on the 14th of December, where we would submit a final action plan uh for adoption and subsequent submission to uh HUD for acceptance. And uh, just to let you know, the 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 plan would be for us to be able to implement these uh the use of these funds and the programs and services associated with them uh starting January the the 1st. Uh, for the sake of providing staff with public comments, uh, those can be done in writing in two ways. Uh, direct those via postal mail to myself uh at the city hall address uh provided, which is 3519 Liberty Drive, Pearland, Texas 77581 for the record, and or also in writing via email at jhardy@pearlandtx.gov. And with that information in the record, Mayor, I will pass back the balance to council for discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. So moving to I uh citizen comments on the public hearing. I'll ask Mayor Protim to pick up on that one.
Mayor, I'm unaware of anybody who has stated that they would like to offer public comment to this public hearing. I think we're ready to move uh move on to the next agenda.
Okay, completes that one. Move to item number four on under this public hearing category. We have an opportunity for the staff and the city council to make comments and uh based on their input into the system. And starting with the city council, I'll I'll have Councilmember Orlando speak out first.
I I don't have any comments at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cobal.
Joel, thanks for your hard work on all this, and no further comments at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Little is not here tonight. Councilmember Hernandez.
Any comments tonight, Mayor? Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Moore.
Good job, Joel. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
Good job as always, Joel. Thanks, sir.
And Councilmember Owens.
Uh, no comment. Joel did a great job.
Wonderful, wonderful. Moving to staff discussion. The staff wrap up. Councilmember Hardy.
Mayor, that ends our report. Uh, we just look forward to coming back to the council and the public with additional information in the future. So we will wrap with that, and uh that wraps up our presentation.
Okay, move with item number six, adjournment of public hearings, which take place right now. Moving to item number seven of the consent agenda, uh, Councilmember Perez. You have uh uh on the consent agenda, are there any items to be moved? And I have a record from you says item B. This is for the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item we have, we'll pull from the consent agenda, items B as in beggar, C as in chili, D as in dog, and F as in friendly.
That's correct. Bravo, Charlie.
Okay, and I'll ask Councilmember Orlando if he will do the honor of presenting this uh consent agenda as it does in usually a nice way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Consider possible action on consent agenda items A through L with the exception of B, C, D, and F. So moved.
Second, Moore.
Okay, we have motion and second on the floor. Councilmember. Secretary of the Secretary.
Member Orlando.
Hi.
Member Carbone.
Hi.
Member Moore.
Hi.
Member Perez.
Hi.
Member Owens.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero to approve items uh consent items A through L with the exception of items B, C, D, and F.
Okay. This is Member Hernandez. I just wanted to let you know that I am here now. Sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, remember, we all add Mr. Hernandez's vote. Member Hernandez?
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero to approve consent items A through L with the exception of items B, C, D, and F.
Okay, with that portion out of the way, let's move to uh the next session, which is item B. Uh, and I'll ask uh Councilmember Orlando if he would present that for our consideration.
Yes, sir. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2020-202. So moved.
Second, Moore.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're in discussion. Staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for your time. Uh, item B is, uh, as related to you last year, uh, the Texas Department of Transportation has a good program for addressing infrastructure, and they have critical bridges that they're under their auspices. They have a program now that they've identified the Country Club Bridge just north of Broadway uh for replacement, and uh the city would be obligated for a 10% participation, and our share of that would be 193,600 as stated here. And uh that would be accomplished through this advanced funding agreement with the state uh which we would uh participate through. Nothing to add, sir?
Council, have any question or comment based on staff report?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, couple of items. Uh, one, I think this is a fantastic um opportunity for the city of Pearland. Uh, we've done uh generally well with these off-system bridge uh contributions to TechDOT in the past. Uh, but a couple of concerns that I would like to just try and get out ahead of. 100% or two, are you online? Are you available?
Yes, sir.
Um, as you recall, the last time we had a um a series of these uh off-system bridges uh in construction, we had some significant delays. Um, I know it wasn't really a factor of TechDOT necessarily as much as their contractor. Um, have we had or communicated with TechDOT as far as uh improvements to their uh their contractors, contractual obligations to ensure we don't have an extended delay like we had on Alvin and on the Woodford Bridge?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Robert Upton's been in discussions with TechDOT to talk about how we minimize uh the construction duration for this replacement. Um, as you know, the alternate routes into the subdivision are 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 not uh very close. Um, but we'll, you know, we'll uh we'll continue to press that point with TechDOT that we've got to have a contract that uh um the actual way the construction is laid out can be moved along quickly and that we uh we make sure the contractor stays on time on this. I know in some of the previous uh bridge replacement contracts we did with TechDOT, they did multiple uh bridges at one time, and so that uh that led to some of the, you know, you get delayed on one and it impacts all the others. So uh this one is, my understanding is a standalone, so I don't expect any of those kind of factors to to be a problem with schedule.
Uh, if you could provide a memo maybe after we verify that, um, I know they've got, it's got an extensive off-system bridge contract, and since we're not uh the, we're not the owners of the contract, we may not have as much um say, but it it, I don't, I don't want to uh, I don't want to uh throw up a bunch of smoke and 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 um prevent us from having such a great deal for us to prove a bridge that's uh that certainly needs to be replaced, but if we at least could be aware of that this uh uh this bridge is going to be included with a number of other off-system bridges outside of Pearland within the region, um, so we can keep an eye on it. Um, and also um maybe some early identification of traffic control. Um, I presume they're going to use the same alignment for the bridge, which means it's going to get demoed and then replaced, which means there the the southbound movement out of that um uh or the that the southbound move and the northbound movement at that location is going to be completely cut off, probably at the same time, which means everybody's got to go through Velveta. Um, and since we have no connectivity to Riverside Ranch, it's really going to congest things over there. Um, so if we need to have like police assistance or something for two or three months, I'd just like to, you know, at least a tech memo, just to kind of have an understanding of what what our plan is uh to be aggressive about the traffic control and getting traffic moved out of that um subdivision.
Yes, sir. That's one of the main next steps is to coordinate with both the fire EMS and uh police uh as well as TechDOT on on those uh that traffic control plan.
Okay, thank you.
Or can I comment?
Yeah, uh, Trent, why are you there? You know, we went through this previously once before. I think Gary Treach was um uh district engineer at that time, and what they were looking at was that house right across from the bridge there of having to take part of that right of way or his yard, and there was a lot of concern about it. But uh on this one, I think there's some discussion for the uh the length and the height of the bridge. And uh I guess from what I've talked to him about that it the the length of it would have to be linked for the flood control work on there. So I was just wondering on this also if we could uh make sure that we get some kind of improvements right there at the end of the bridge where Green Tea's at, where we, y'all put some asphalt there to cover up some of the bad spots, but we still have a lot of water that comes into that area and holds there in place. And uh one thing on the traffic control, if we could, to make sure that they have signs up on Scarsdale up there about the bridge being closed and no traffic, no through traffic. We get quite a flow of uh traffic through here, and a lot of it, if you're if you're working outside the yard, a car stopped and pull over and ask you, said, how do we get out of here? And so you'd have to give them directions on how to get out of the subdivision, but I think it'd be good on the traffic control that uh no through traffic uh at Scarsdale up there and then stating the bridge is closed. But that's a, that's pretty well, you know, with that, uh, I didn't know, I'm sure they're not far enough long. They don't have a schedule and don't have the design done only yet, but there was some uh question about the raising the height of the of the bridge and uh also the length on that, so.
Yes, sir. That's uh being coordinated with Harris County Flood Control, and uh we'll uh, you know, take a look at the traffic control plan and see what we can do to dissuade people from cutting through.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other comment from council at this point? Secretary's kind of quiet. Maybe we need to move into a bit. There we could put board.
Hey, Member Orlando.
Hi.
Member Carbone.
Hi.
Member Hernandez. Member Hernandez.
Hi.
Member Moore.
Hi.
Member Perez.
Hi.
Member Owens.
Hi.
The motion carries six to zero to approve uh or adopt resolution number 2020-202.
Okay, moving to item number three on our agenda. Uh, Councilmember Orlando.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2020-200. So moved.
Second, Perez.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're in discussion. Staff report on this item.
Item C is a re uh renewal for our software uh package that we have for enterprise software. Uh, Tyler uh provides also the New World for our financials and then some of our human resource based software, and so the 200, $2,000 is our maintenance for the year upcoming. Nothing to add, sir?
Council, have any question or comment based on staff report?
Yep, Mayor, I pulled this one. Um, I mean, New World is what runs our payroll as well as utility billing, and through some of these utility billing issues we've had, I mean, it's kind of the light that that New World has provided some of those issue issues, and um I don't, I'm not, I'm not in favor of upping this. Um, I I know we probably need it, but um we need to get their attention, and I'm tired of those issues. And I I think it's ridiculous that you can't process some credit card payments and run payroll at the same time. Uh, and not only you can't, but you'll come back with errors, and if I had that in my business, I'd be out of business.
Do you have any council comments at this point?
Uh, I would just say I I have a, I have a difficult time uh with Member Carbone on that. We we've had significant issues. Um, I don't know if it's inherent or if it's inherent with the um the level of service we're getting in the maintenance, but uh perhaps, obviously, we need to maintain the software, but I'm I'm not sure if there's um if there's a possibility, there's another vendor that can provide us better service. Maybe that's something we need to explore. Um, or if these issues are systemic to the to the program and there's nothing that can be done, um, you know, maybe maybe we we have provided some additional information on that, and we start exploring difficult as it may be, the opportunity to 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 seek out new software that can better serve us. Uh, or as I've said, I I brought this up in the past, I know other cities actually have um uh code technicians that work for the city. Um, for instance, um, and I know this because my father-in-law does this. Uh, city of Tempe has their own staff members that write the write code for them for their uh specific um software that is maintained by their own staff, developed by their own staff, and as issues such as what Member Carbone had brought up um uh come, uh, that that staff can modify the code on demand as opposed to us waiting for um some series of um uh geek squad type individuals that come in and maintain a uh a software that really is just not uh up uh up to par, at least for not for what our citizens are demanding. So um uh, Clay, maybe if you could address the possibility of looking for alternatives, uh, maybe if we're kind of stuck with this, I don't know. Uh, but we really, you know, for the amount of complaints we're still receiving, we really need to try and find a solution to this.
So uh just generally, I mean, uh, understand the the questions, but like we we've shared the responses and in contact with the vendor about the topics that have been brought up and uh, you know, the uh work towards making good on that, and uh, you know, it's obviously frustrating for everybody. Uh, I'd only remind or point out that the ERP software itself, you know, off the top of the head, was on the order of magnitude of five or six million dollars to uh buy, so. of the head was on the order magnitude of five or $6 million to buy. So it's not a small thing and in any shape to to change a major effort like that. So that then that's multi year procurement and transition for that. So but before tonight is the maintenance for what we have and continue to try to make it. All I can say is I'm not going to make any excuses for them. But they have tried to work for work with us in the fixes. But you know, it is where we are where we are right now.
I think I appreciate what you're saying. I know it's it would be a difficult thing to proceed with. And it would not be something that happens overnight that would happen through a series of budget conversations and we find funding. I guess my point would be if you know, if we spent $500,000 in a car whose brakes don't work, no matter how many times we bring somebody that to turn and come out and fix it, at some point we can have to replace the car. And I'm, I'm beginning to lose more and more faith with respect to this system each time we hear about ongoing issues. So it's an ongoing conversation. Like I said, I would certainly be an advocate for five or $6 million for us to hire staff that can create something for us that we can we can control. That's obviously a much more significant change than what than the approach that we've had thus now, or thus far. So obviously, I wouldn't push for that if there is some kind of alternative. But perhaps maybe over this next, next few months, we can start looking at, we can start looking at alternatives and options. I'm sure Member Carbone and I would would be perfectly happy to sit in a conference room with staff and try and talk about what what our options are and maybe provide some, some of our input. But I think for me, just considering how many problems we've had, I don't think I'm, I'm as comfortable as Member Carbone is. I'm uncomfortable like Member Carbone about awarding this.
And so what happens if we vote this down tonight?
It's not really an alternative because we need service and maintenance on the contract for the software we have. So, you know, we rely upon that for everything that's outfitted there for our financials, for the payroll, for everything we do. So.
Is that to imply then that we're using that on a regular basis? There would be no stopgap measure and it would be a pretty.
So, yeah, the ramp up would be, you know, two years to to go through that procurement and transition. But, you know, I would be happy and maybe, you know, we've been into this, you know, maybe it's good to go out and test that and see what the alternatives are, just so we're in a position to test to see what the choices are. You know, the problem is overall in the industry, you know, every software package, we seems like we bought, you know, those get acquired by another company and then acquired by another company. So you're not dealing with the same people when you started out. And there's a lot of consolidation with that. And I think that's, you know, then they they close down, that's not, that's somewhat specific to this particular contract, but not all of them.
Clay?
Is anyone from IT on to, I guess, maybe to speak to, I see that it's broken down into multiple, I guess, softwares and pieces of software and integrations. Is there any piece of this that we could forego from an IT perspective? Or would it be kind of just the whole shebang?
So the invoice is shown there and shows the parts. I mean, the majority is for, looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, I think you're getting on, is that 56? Is that the 51? Is that the court management?
The first invoice is for Tyler Technologies for specific to court, and the remaining one is ERP, and that's all encompassing. Obviously, there's modules there, but all the modules play into one another. So if you eliminate one module on this list, you're going to have a negative impact somewhere else down the line.
I see. And not to, not to discount anything that Clay said, but Dan, just as a as a backup, would you concur with what Clay said on the kind of the the ramp up timeline and stuff like that if we were to look for an alternative?
Yes. It took us about two, two, two and a half years from start to finish to migrate off of HD, even though we're still partially on it for public works. And that was within 18 month implementation. So it's right on point with what Mr. Pearson said.
So is that something, Clay, you think y'all can start working on right away, I guess?
Oh, yes. I think it deserves a fuller discussion and, you know, probably a, you know, February kind of thing. But between now and then, you know, that's not too far off. We could start that and generate what a timeline we look like and alternatives and what other people experienced. And I think that'd be realistic for sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Quick question. Looking at the the invoices, I mean, I see the the Munich code for 50 or for 61K. When you look at the full ERP, what, what is this invoice? What's the timeframe this is covering?
So there's two separate invoices. The one for in code starts technically October 1st, 2020.
Right.
And September 30. And then the Tyler New World one actually starts on 41, but we lumped them both together to take them to council since it's through the same organization or the same vendor.
Okay.
41 of 2021.
So, so we could split these out and and we've got until April 1 of next year before we would potentially lose any service on the the main ERP, which is the $141,000 worth, right?
Yes.
So why, just to, if it does nothing but puts pressure on them to know that we're serious, why don't, why don't we split this out, approve the Munich code tonight? That way there's no lapse in service and that gives us six months to look into if there's any alternatives out there. And I don't mean alternatives to firing up a new ERP, but to getting some better service from them.
They are a vendor to this, to the software, right? So there are theoretically other vendors that could provide similar service.
No, they're the owner of the software. Tyler Technologies acquired New World, let's see, three years ago.
And they're the only ones that maintain it.
Correct.
So we bought additional software from New World previously. As a part of that, they were supposed to come in and do training at staff, because we had problems with them the first time. And that's when we had $8,000 misplaced somewhere or something on there. And then when that was dated, the person that was in charge of finance said, this is not our first problem with these people. But I thought when we approved this on a previous, the was the software with New World, that part of that was they were going to come in and train people within the water department on that. Did that ever happen or occur?
Councilmember Owens, yes, they did. They've been training since dating back to, I believe it's been early June, and they've been training all of our new staff that we've had, plus our existing service, customer service representatives, and that's all been at no additional cost to the city. And as a matter of fact, I think we're getting ready to finish up that service with them. The only thing that Councilmember Carbone, I think your, your recommendation is a good one. I'll point out that there's eight different suites in the one suite that we're talking about related here relates to the utility billing. They've been very good and over the last several months in working with us, every time we run a bill, they have a representative online to help troubleshoot any issues that come up. Primarily, the biggest issue that we have had with them relates to the reoccurring credit card. And that has, the the issue has been when we've been running several different large programs at the same time. But bottom line is, is that there have been issues, but it's only related to that one suite.
If it's going well, then let's, let's push this until closer to the renewal time and and staff can tell us how good they've done for the next six months and convince us to move forward with them. But I don't know that I want to go ahead and approve the contract now after all the issues we've had.
I agree.
I'm okay with that approach. And then we, we add something to the February budget session where we start looking at the potential of alternate vendors and the financial impacts that would do to 21, 22, 23 budget in order for us to make a transfer. If a better system exists.
So if I could, just, I think it's important, we don't want to mess this up. I mean, Dan, please speak up. So if there's a consensus, we'd be okay to approve the 61,000 for the in code that's courts and technically up first, and then defer and revisit the 141. We package that so it goes all together and be fully open about that for the upcoming fiscal year. But there wouldn't be a downside revisiting the 141 later this later in this fiscal year. Is that right, Dan?
We need to have it renewed by April 1.
Okay. So.
This while next year, but this fiscal year.
Right. So if counsel was so inclined, you could make a friendly amendment to amend the total amount to the 61,173.23. And for the courts piece, and then we revisit and talk to you more in February, March.
All right, I'll offer an amendment. If there's no other comments. I, I move that we amend the value of this contract to 61,173.23 to accommodate only invoice. And I'm guessing at the number because of the quality of the, of the image, but 025-3078, and exclude any payment to the subsequent invoice.
Second, Hernandez.
We have a motion and a second on the floor and further discussion. Madam Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
Hi.
Member Orlando?
Hi.
Member Carbone?
Hi.
Member Hernandez? Member Moore?
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero to amend the value of the maintenance services contract to 61,173.23 to accommodate 025-20-8 invoice.
Okay. Thank you for that. Moving item number D. I'm sorry.
We only voted for the amendment. Now we need to vote on the.
We've got an amendment, we got amended motion on the table. Okay. And for the comment on that.
No, ma'am.
Madam Secretary?
Member Orlando?
Sorry about that.
Hi.
Member Carbone?
Hi.
Member Hernandez? Member Moore?
Hi. Hi.
Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
Hi.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash 200 as amended.
Okay. Okay, moving to item D. Councilmember Longdo.
Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2020 dash 201. So moved.
Second, Moore.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Similarly, as we are in the first meeting of the new fiscal year, we have a renewal for our software for maintenance of the existing superior software. And that includes primarily the police records management software, track it, and some GIS integration plus HD work quarters. So that that's an amount of the 321 for the upcoming year. Nothing to add, sir.
Good. Counsel, any question about staff report?
Mayor, this is Woody. I've got one question, which is going to be pretty easy. This clarification, I guess. On page two of 28, the scope of the agreement contract states that the renewals are automatic. And what do they mean by automatic? That they just continued pop up and automatic and not come to council or what?
You know, on the fly here, I mean, I don't know specifically, but we're obviously here to ask you for the budget allocation and make that happen. So.
Yeah, because the other thing it says is this is a contract renewals are automatic. So.
It's probably their boilerplate. And if we chose not to, we'd have to exercise the cancellation clauses, whatever those are in the contract.
And those renewals are subject to council appropriating funds for the contract, which is why we're here this evening. And if that didn't happen, then obviously, the contract would not be.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
I believe exactly says it renews automatic yearly with council approval on on page two of that item.
Yes.
Okay. Any other question or comment from council? Madam Secretary? I think we got a motion secretary. Madam Secretary?
All right, Member Orlando?
Hi.
Member Carbone?
Hi.
Member Hernandez?
Hi.
Member Moore?
Hi.
Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
Hi.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash 201.
Okay, looking at the rest of our consent agenda, I believe we have already approved those.
Mayor, we still have item Fox.
Yeah, yeah.
We had B, C, D, and F.
Yes, sir. We have that one.
That was item F, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. The previous item was item Delta. This, we now need to move to item Foxtrot. All right. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2020 dash 211. So moved.
Any question or comment from council on this item?
So.
Staff report.
First, I wanted to get through talking.
So Mayor Council, item F is a off of the statewide Texas Byboard, and that's for our laser fish system. The system has not been upgraded in many, many years, and Crystal's brought that to light. And so highly recommend and need to move forward on a modernizing that, bring it up. So the contract does that. And it also brings alongside some consulting help to have them assist in the transition and making sure that everything's configured correctly. So nothing to add.
Counsel, any question or comment based on the staff report?
Mayor, I just have a comment on it. Looking at the cost on this, on page two of 98, it's a one time software cost of $31,510.63. Reoccurring maintenance yearly cost 35,129.80. The yearly maintenance cost is $4,000 more than what the software is. And that's on a yearly recurring cost. Is there any explanation for that?
Well, it's it's an annual renewal for the licensing, but, you know, it probably builds in. Crystal, do you have any detail on that?
Yeah, because that just says.
So the initial cost of 31,000, the actual cost is going to be 68, around 68 or 78,000. We have included additional licenses for our users. So we will now have 60 licenses, if approved by council, versus about half of those licenses currently that we've purchased.
Okay, I was just concerned about the yearly maintenance costs are pretty heavy. But I didn't know if it included license or what, to be honest with you. But it just seemed like it was awful. It's $4,000 higher than the software on a yearly basis.
So Councilmember Owens?
So Councilmember Owens. I could just interject. Um, we're getting credits uh, for the software we originally purchased when laser fish was purchased, and it's up on the screen now. If we were to actually acquire the software brand new out of the box, it's closer to a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety nine, almost three hundred a year. So all the licensing that we previously paid are being credited back. Um, and that's why the initial cost is significantly less than the ongoing, well, slightly less than the ongoing maintenance.
Okay. All right, that's what I wanted to find out. Thanks.
Did you have the question or comment, council? Madam Secretary, I believe we are wound up with motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone. Member Little. I'm sorry, Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash two one one.
I think we cleaned out the rest of the consent agenda, which is H, I, J, K, and L. Moving in our agenda to the new item. Item eight matters removed from consent agenda, and there were four of those. Then uh, moving into item number nine, new business. Just remember Carbone, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash two oh five, so moved.
Second, more.
Okay, we're in discussion, mate. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, this is the first reading for a rezoning request that you saw. There's a positive recommendation from your uh, planning and zoning commission. This is property uh, to go to uh, GB McCard and the uh, um, at Max Road and McCard Road where the uh, new road has been awarded for construction. Um, I don't know, Mr. McDonald or others from planning have any presentation or adds to that?
Pardon it, Mr. Pearson. Uh, I do have a quick uh, presentation that I can run through uh, just as a reminder to uh, city council if you would like.
We are at your beck and call.
All right, we should have quick PowerPoint loaded up. Right, and uh, good evening, council members. Martin Griggs, uh, community development. Uh, as stated, uh, this was a rezoning request uh, to go to general business uh, from the SR twelve residential zoning district. Uh, the PNZ recommended uh, by a vote of six, zero to one to approve the general business reclassification. Uh, at the planning and zoning uh, meeting, uh, the discussion was largely on uh, McCard Road and the timing of the construction, uh, whether or not all of the right of way had been acquired, and then uh, what the future uh, characteristics of the area would look like once the road was developed. Uh, just again, as a reminder, uh, this is a current aerial of the property uh, with the properties outlined. And then this is the future land use plan showing the suburban residential and the portion of the uh, area is within the residential retail nodes. Uh, and then this was the included uh, site plan. Uh, again, this is more of an illustrative site plan, uh, and it is not included within the rezoning request. Uh, that completes uh, our staff report. I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Counselor, any further comment or questions at this point? The staff have any comments at this point?
Mayor, this is Woody. I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, ready. Okay.
Have we acquired all the future right of way for the roadway there? Are we? Who can answer that?
A member, a member owns the uh, construction's been awarded, and uh, they've been mobilized and they're ready to go.
Okay, I always wondered because that uh, you know, if we'd done that, and of course, this right of way doesn't make any difference, but uh, on there. But there's always been some concern about the heavy traffic that we have like on five eighteen. And uh, just want to say that this is probably the beginning on the future of McCard Road, what is going to happen through there with the retail and and all this other stuff uh, coming on there. And so I would imagine ten, fifteen years from now, you're probably going to see heavy traffic on this road, just like you do on five eighteen. But you know, the the opening the road, the commercial is going to follow it, just like they did on five eighteen when that was done. But yeah, and so this is not for Max Road there and and uh, on the north side that In-N-Out, we talked about that, and that was the traffic coming in and out, and it's too close to to the roadway to be able to do that. But that's the only thing I had on it. Thank you.
Okay, then we go to City Secretary. Motion second on the floor.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash two zero five.
Mm-hmm. Moving to give me this item number two, I'm gonna move Hernandez up to item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number two zero 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 M dash two zero four, so moved.
Wow, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, uh, this is a first reading for a rezoning request. This one's on off of uh, wagon trail there, and uh, there was a recommendation negative, I believe, from uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and again, I'll ask Mr. Martin to illuminate us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, again, this is a rezoning from the RE, which is residential estate, to office professional. Uh, this is for a medical spa facility. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a negative recommendation of one to six, uh, which is a negative recommendation uh, to city council that will require a super majority vote uh, to approve as presented. Uh, just again, as a reminder, uh, this is the aerial uh, of the property outlined in red uh, for the sites. Uh, this is the future or the zoning map of the property, uh, indicating the RE and the RE surrounding uh, the subject's property. And then uh, the future land use plan showing suburban residential. Those site plan, uh, and again, with this being a zone change request, uh, or the site plan will not be included as a part of the resuming request. Can I complete staff's report?
Does the council have any question or comment based on this item?
Uh, I'd comment that um, I don't think that the use is all that uh, damaging to the area, but um, I think given that our planning zoning has uh, pretty aggressively denied this, um, I think um, it's probably appropriate that we follow their guidance. Uh, Martin, I do have one comment. Um, uh, this is respect to maybe future um, future applicants. Looks like our GIS has eliminated the future land use plan from uh, the database. Um, hard to determine uh, if uh, proposed zone changes uh, meet the future land use. If we can't see that on the GIS, it's one item I check when I look at uh, the zone change requests. So if we could possibly get with um, um, our GIS department, see if they can get re-added. Um, I may be missing it, but just looking at the last couple of days, I don't.
Good. Any other county, uh, the council comments at this point?
Yeah, I I think this is a great project. I I just, I I don't think it's in the right place. Um, most of that area out there is single family homes. Um, so I I I don't know. I mean, I think we put this in out there and we're we're change, we're we're changing that area when everything around it is all single family home, so I I don't know.
Any other comment from council? Well, here is none. I guess we move to Madam Secretary. Motion second on the floor.
Member Hernandez.
No.
Member Moore. Member Moore.
No.
Member Perez.
No.
Member Owens.
No.
Member Orlando.
No.
Member Carbone.
Nope.
The motion fails um, zero to six.
Okay. If we had chosen to approve it, it would take a super majority to have accomplished it. Moving down to item number three, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R two zero two zero dash two zero three, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
We have a motion on the second floor, on second motion. Motion second on the floor. We have staff report at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, as uh, start of the fiscal year, uh, one of the housekeeping, if you will, items is to uh, uh, review and adopt a intent to reimburse. This allows the capital improvement projects are scheduled uh, as soon as tonight to uh, proceed and for the city to uh, uh, fund that in the interim, but uh, during the fiscal year, we'll be issuing the the long term financing uh, for that, and by adopting this, we can get going on the projects and square the actual amounts that are needed uh, closer to uh, what's eventually issued. So again, this is an annual uh, rate, and uh, the items are listed on there, and I believe they all comport with uh, the budget that's just adopted in the CIP. Nothing to add, sir.
Ooh, hearing none. I don't hear anything from Carbone.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can jump in, uh, I guess first of all, in terms of the timing on the sale of the bonds, I appreciate the white paper that's included uh, in there and the the work done. Um, I agree with kind of the bottom line is um, is issue them in December. Um, not moving that forward. Um, I I guess the only question I'd have is when you look at this uh, look at the intent to reimburse, um, and you look into the the certificates of obligation, there's, there's the fire station, police training, the trail and the safe routes to school, all those kind of in my mind fall within our our current practice um, uh, of only issuing COs for public safety or or programs that we've got a a match with. Uh, the traffic signal upgrade program, I get is, I I know that's that's been in the the five year CIP. Um, so I mean, I can respect that, but do we have any match coming or or what's the 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 logic of bringing that up into a CO?
Yep, thanks. Thanks for the question. As you note and and know, uh, that was uh, designated in the CIP that you adopted uh, this summer. Um, and uh, uh, primarily the COs are left for uh, those city improvement buildings, and then those grant items, as you said, there is also provision in the uh, adopted financial policies uh, for items that there there isn't um, other funding sources, and the council chooses to proceed and not wait. Um, so this would fall into that uh, category, um, similar to what when we did uh, Linwood and so forth, we brought forward some of the street projects uh, during the year, so there is some, you know, precedent, if you will, for that, but you know, Trent, maybe you can talk to, that's particular of the traffic signal upgrades and the pros and cons of, you know, proceeding now versus waiting for another uh, general obligation question.
Sure, thank you, Clay. So um, you know, the the this goes back to our pilot program we we ran on uh, on Bailey, uh, where we we looked at the upgraded controllers, upgraded detection systems and those sort of things, because our existing system is basically um, that, you know, the the software we're using is is obsolete, no longer supported. Um, so we've got to make the move uh, to to another system. We piloted it, we budgeted through this process uh, to move that forward, and and since it's dealing with traffic movement and traffic safety, um, you know, that that's one of the reasons it was considered under under this funding mechanism. I think the other piece is because it is a pressing need to go ahead and start making those upgrades, uh, waiting for another general obligation uh, opportunity uh, wouldn't allow us to move those upgrades forward uh, any time soon.
If I could add, uh, and not to throw monkey in the wrench, but wrench in the monkey, whatever, um, the if if uh, council desired, uh, you know, we we are over fund balance and uh, you know, the amount is relatively small. We could proceed with the intent to reimburse, but when it comes time, and let the project proceed, and then when the time comes uh, for actually issuing it, we could uh, pay cash instead, or use, look at that option versus, you know, issuing the CO at that time. So uh, sorry, that just struck me as an idea.
Well, if we can do that, why don't we go ahead and pull it out now and just get it, get it right tonight?
Uh, entirely consent to the council, if you'd like to, again, to have a draw down the the cash balance that we just adopted by that much, but uh, as Trent said, I think the important thing is really to make sure the project proceeds, whether it's funded with COs long term or uh, from that cash balance is secondary.
Counselor, any question or comment on that uh, suggestion?
Mayor, don't we, and and our Trent, don't we have Sleepy Hollow on this one also? As one of the projects?
Uh, yes, Sleepy Hollow is a project. It is, you know, either it's it's not covered in this intent to reimburse, so it it was either already covered or be covered in subsequent ones.
Yeah, I think it's on.
It is, it is on there. It's the last item on the, yeah, it is, it's on the.
Sorry, there it is. I I didn't pick it out. It's the last item on GOs.
Yeah, the one that, the reason I brought that up. Weren't we in the midst of trying to buy houses down there along that uh, area to do a buyout?
So I believe since Harvey, we've bought one uh, house in that area. Um, and of course, you know, that there's uh, there's the houses that, of course, back up to the creek, which we were looking at. Um, and and I believe we purchased one more of those, but there's the houses on the other side of the street and the rest of the subdivision that really were not being uh, pursued for buyouts. So we do need the street.
Yeah, okay. Well, I was just wondering, you know, if if we're buying out, you know, for the uh, detention stuff, that while we're putting in two point eight million dollars for a street that was going to be flooded. Okay, that that's fine. I'll just know that what, you know, previously, we had been looking at that down that area.
Okay. Any other question or comment from council?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and and make a motion that we remove the four hundred and fifty thousand out of the the COs for the traffic signal upgrade program fiscal year twenty one.
Second, more.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, if I could, just just to be clear, I don't know, it needs to be um, specified, but just so we're all on the same page, the concept would be to uh, have that project proceed, but we'll process a budget amendment and pay for that out of general fund cash or capital improvements cash. Is that the idea, rather than the COs?
Oh yeah, I love the project. It needs to get done. I don't think the CO is the funding mechanism. Um, so however staff wants to get there, but uh, but I don't think CO is the right way.
Understood.
Okay, this is a uh, motion. Here to thank us from city council.
Amendment that is seconded, Mayor.
It's a, it's a modified motion, isn't it?
Yes, sir. We have, we need a vote on the amendments to remove.
Yes, sir. We have, we need to vote on the amendments to remove 450K from the, uh, the general obligation value.
Yes, uh, okay, Council, uh, Madam Secretary.
Okay, so the, uh, amended motion is to remove $450 from the general obligation value for the traffic signal program.
Four hundred. To remove 450,000 from the certificates of obligation totals.
Okay. So remove the $450,000 from the certificates of obligation to the, for the general obligation value for the traffic signal program. Is that correct?
Uh, scratch your general obligation.
Okay. All right.
And I think you're good.
Okay, great. So the amended, I'll say it one more time. The amended motion is to remove 450,000 dollars, um, from the COs for the traffic signal program.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember.
Crystal, uh, Councilmember Little is here now. He's getting online.
Thank you.
Just in time.
All right. Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to amend, um, for the amendment.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number four. I'm going to put Councilmember Perez back to work here.
Mayor, let's vote on that amended motion.
Oh yeah, we've got, we've still got the amended motion hanging out there, don't we?
We just, we need to, we need to vote on the motion.
Any other question or comment from council on the amended motion yet?
No, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we'll go with what we got.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution R 2020 dash two zero three as amended.
Good. Now moving to item four, Councilmember Perez, would you do the honor?
Uh, raising possible action resolution number R 2020 dash one six one. So moved.
Second.
More.
Second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you, Mary Council. Very pleased to, uh, bring to you, uh, recommendation for the guaranteed maximum price for the new, uh, Shadow Creek Public Library. Uh, this is a major improvement, uh, uh, replacing the storefront that's, uh, been in existence for years, uh, there on, uh, Business Center Drive, uh, a land that's been, uh, designated for public use on Shadow Creek, uh, Parkway. And so this will, the council's already approved, uh, uh, substantial down payment, if you will, uh, to proceed with Spyglass, Spoglass, I'm sorry, uh, for the, uh, 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 construction manager risk process. So, uh, from that approval that council made, uh, there's been considerable work and now able to come to you with this guaranteed maximum price, uh, for, uh, bringing the construction, uh, to begin that, uh, pricing is good. And, uh, the improvement, uh, will, uh, like I said, bring us this, uh, new improvement public library. It will be operated by the, uh, Bresser County Library System once it's, uh, constructed, but the city, uh, is responsible for the construction. And significantly, uh, more good news, uh, the, uh, project is, uh, scheduled to be reimbursed uh, from TERS number two, uh, because of the partnership there and the success of the TERS. So once it's constructed and only after it's constructed, uh, we can put in for the reimbursement and projections are good that that'll, uh, be positive, uh, by the end of the TERS and reimburse the city for our construction costs. So, uh, lots of moving parts, but as council's aware, we, uh, need to do this, uh, award and we've already got the interim financing in place, uh, through the COs for short-term, uh, financing. And, uh, the building looks great. Lots of positive, uh, input and, uh, feedback on that. And, uh, very much looking forward to getting this in the ground. So nothing to add, sir.
Okay. Any question or comment from council there? I like this move in port say.
I've got, well, Trent's on there or Luke, nevermind. Go ahead.
Woody, you through talking?
Go ahead. Well, I was waiting and, and two other names came up. The only thing that I was going to ask on that on page, uh, three of 20, we get a guaranteed maximum, uh, price on their project. And we got a, uh, contingency of 3.425 million. On page six, we got a contingency of 2.6 million. And I was wondering how we lost 800,000 in two pages. Or three pages.
Nothing lost. It's, uh, uh, construction, but there's, uh, uh, money that's needed for the furniture and fixtures. Uh, so that, uh, you know, the other contingency probably is just the construction part of that. But, you know, you're awarding tonight the, uh, construction self and that, uh, table, I think, as you referenced, page four, whatever that is, five, uh, that shows the, uh, all-in cost with the furniture and fixtures, uh, still to be awarded and, and, uh, another day.
Uh, is anybody on the line from Spoglass?
Yes, sir. We do have a representative from Spoglass.
I think Trent, maybe for, for clarification, the budgeted item was 23.5 million. We're coming in under that and the contingency is just the, the additional value of the available funding if needed.
Uh, yes, sir. And I think the difference that member Owens pointed out was the difference between our, uh, construction estimate we had, uh, when, when the memo was written, uh, and where we ended up on the final GMP. So we actually came in, uh, that difference under, uh, you know, making, making the project balance that much greater. So since the, since the, uh, memo, I got the final numbers and it came in under that.
Well, Trent, I'll tell you, you've got a good contractor with Spoglass.
Yes, sir.
For 30 years and Jesse Gonzalez was there and they are a very good firm.
Well, Jesse, for a while though, different, different company now. It's great company, but Jesse, Jesse's been.
Yeah. Been gone. His own company now, or did have one.
Um, but I, I think, uh, uh, maybe the headline trend is that we thought we were saving, uh, 2.6 and it, it turns out we're sort of saving 3.4. That's what the, the memo is selecting under what we had budgeted, uh, but we have some flexibility to make some modifications uh, and add some value if, if, uh, if the, uh, council so chooses, correct?
Yeah, I, I didn't understand the last part there about the qualifications. But yes, the, the project balance did increase since the original estimates to where it's 3.4 is what we did not spend out of the overall project budget.
The third contingency, but we're, we can't, they're not, we're not, the contractor does not have authorization to go out and spend 3.4 million dollars without council approval, correct?
That's, uh, neither does staff. We, we are approving tonight the, uh, numbers to the GMP and that's all that's being authorized tonight.
Okay.
I was just wondering what the reduction was going to two more pages over.
Um, we're just saving more money. Woody, you should be happy.
I knew you'd have a answer, Perez.
Yeah.
Um, we want to provide an exercise preemptive to this GMP with, uh, Spoglass and, um, uh, and PGAO.
I'm, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the question.
Have we gotten, have we gone through a VE exercise preemptive to this, um, uh, GMP?
So I would almost, you know, kind of characterize the whole C Mar process as, as a, a VE process. I mean, you got the, the contractor in early on the design so they can help guide the, the, as we move through that design on materials, uh, constructability issues, uh, to, to help control the cross, cost as we move through the, the design. Um, so I, you know, I, I would say the C Mar process in and of itself incorporates VE measures, uh, as, as we arrive at the, uh, guaranteed maximum price.
Fair enough. I will accept that.
And if I can add for the non-engineers, that's value engineering, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Oh, you guys are great. Any other comment or question or joke that council wants to tell me?
Uh, I would say just every time this comes up, this is something that I fought for since, uh, uh, since we are on council. I know we have other members, uh, member, uh, former member Reed, um, few other members, uh, uh, that have fought, uh, fought for this to happen. Um, and again, I'm just excited to see this, uh, finally, uh, finally, uh, start breaking ground and moving forward. Hopefully I get this built before I come off council.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Member Perez?
Absolutely aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one six one.
Great. Let's move to item five and, uh, let Councilmember Owens, uh, share a little.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2002 20 dash two oh eight. I so move.
Second, Hernandez.
Motion second, we're in discussion. Need a little staff report.
Thanks, sir. Uh, similarly, um, we've been through, uh, considerable design effort and, uh, council approved the first contract with, uh, Durotech and that's using this construction manager risk process. Again, that's, uh, continues to work well for all parties. Uh, and so through that process, uh, we've done the, uh, the, uh, value engineering with, uh, Durotech and gone through all that and come up with the, uh, guaranteed maximum price for a new animal shelter. Uh, this replaces a, uh, undersized, uh, obsolete building on Old Alvin that's not, uh, well-located and not sufficient for, uh, parlay land today or certainly not tomorrow. Uh, and so this was, uh, approved with the voter-proof bond issue in, uh, May of 19, the allocation for that. Uh, so the, uh, action tonight would be to, uh, provide the, uh, guaranteed maximum price with Durotech for the 7.379 million. Uh, that's, uh, again, good pricing, um, as the memo that we shared to you a couple of weeks ago shows, uh, uh, very competitive on par with, uh, other such specialized facilities in the area and, uh, on a square footage or other basis. And so, uh, this would be on, built on land that the city owns on, uh, Freedom Drive, uh, next to, uh, public safety building. So, uh, more centrally located and have laid adoptions in our animal services citywide. And so, uh, rec looking forward and appreciate, uh, favorable consideration tonight. Nothing to add.
Just, just to clarify, Mayor, if I could, Clay, I think you, you said the number for the fire station.
Yeah, I just saw that. It's, uh, 8.475 for the animal shelter. You're right. Apologize. So, still with Durotech, we did, uh, write, should note that, uh, uh, we split these into two items just for clarity, but, um, they, they were packaged together for obvious reasons of economies of scale and, uh, uh, the contractor, um, you know, we, if they were for some reason to not be, uh, moved forward together has been budgeted, has been planned as we've already acted upon. Uh, we'd have to revisit because the cost would increase for any one of them alone. So thank you for pointing that out.
Good. Anything else? Any question or comment based on our staff report?
Uh, Mayor, I, yes, if I could, this is, uh, Member Hernandez. I just wanted to point out the 23.9% uh, savings of over the third, I guess, under the 13 million that was originally quoted. Um, I'm really excited to see that. I think that, uh, the residents specifically have been using that, that 13 million dollar number and, uh, giving us feedback, telling us, you know, they wanted us to, to, to go after a better price and I'm happy to see that we've, uh, been able to secure a better price at the, uh, roughly nine million. So I appreciate all the hard work going into getting that price down and still deliver everything that we need for our animals. Appreciate that.
True.
Yeah, I would, um, I would second that. I know that, uh, there was a lot of, um, a, a lot of comments from, uh, from certain individuals about, uh, the value of this, uh, contract or potential contract when we, when uh, we went out to bond. I think as council, uh, and the staff, we tried to do our best to explain that is only the maximum price, uh, based on whether or not we were going to buy land and other things, uh, that may not have gone in our favor to ensure that we could move forward with the project, uh, particularly one that was, uh, that much in its infancy. Um, I think me and the other council members, um, had all committed and promised that we would do all that we can to keep the value low and in, in line with, um, uh, what the industry is paying for these type of buildings. And that's clearly the case. Uh, so I hope that, um, those who had constantly brought up this concern, uh, will help us advertise that the council and staff, uh, listened to the concern and addressed it and ensure that this building is appropriately valued. Um, I would also, um, uh, echo what, um, um, uh, the city manager stated, having Durotech do, uh, both projects at the same time is going to be a significant savings to us. Having two contractors work adjacent to each other in projects that, uh, interconnect, uh, Woody, I'm sure that you've, you've probably dealt with a project like that. We all have at some point. It's, it is a nightmare and it is very difficult and it leads to nothing but problems. So, uh, Durotech's a great co- contractor. Uh, I know they'll do a good job and have to construct these both at the same time is clearly the best, uh, best way forward. So I appreciate staff's effort. Recognize that and move forward with both of these projects appropriately.
Hmm. Any other question or comment from council at this point? Hearing none. Uh, Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash two zero eight.
Moving to, moving to item number six, Councilmember Alada, would you present this for our review?
Sure, Mayor. Uh, consideration and possible action resolution number R 2020 dash two zero six. So moved.
Second, Hernandez.
Okay. Motion second on the floor, staff report.
Thanks, sir. Uh, uh, very similarly, but this is for replacement of, uh, fire station, which was originally built, uh, uh, years ago, decades ago, when, uh, city had a much different, uh, fire service need and capability. Now we do have, uh, 24/7 professional, uh, fire services EMS. And, uh, they've been operating on a building that was not built for that purpose. And so again, uh, uh, saw the opportunity and, and, uh, uh, looking forward to building a new replacement fire station, uh, adjacent to that building, uh, that will give us the, the capabilities of a modern, uh, facility. And, uh, they'll be on Freedom Drive next to the animal shelter. Uh, and, uh, we went through the same process with Durotech. And, uh, have good pricing on that for the 7.379 million dollars as is seen there. Uh, we, uh, uh, will be repurposing at a later date, the, uh, existing building. We'll get into that later, budget time, so forth. Uh, we want to, uh, advance our police training capabilities, have an academy of our own, uh, but we'll address that later. I will note just for the record that, uh, uh, with the new fire station, we've not, uh, built in the, um, uh, training weight room in there. Uh, we see an opportunity to, uh, build that into the future re-purpose of existing fire station four. And so we won't have, uh, uh, dueling weight rooms at the PSB in this, but that's for another day. I just want to note that that's not included in here, but uh, big picture, uh, this is, uh, uh, another investment improvement in our capabilities and support for our fire services and, uh, good pricing and, uh, looking forward to getting this going. I have to answer.
Clay, I think with the way we're growing in the city. Play, I think with the way we're growing in the city of Pearland, that I'm glad to see us have more public service fire and EMS out there to protect them. Staff, council, have a question or comment based on the report?
Mayor, quick, quick question. Um I think we're okay because we've got a station next door, but I know we're having issues at some other stations in terms of the geotech and some shifting soils. Um I assume we've already run that to ground on this location?
So we've got that issue at one location and um of course, we're still investigating and and developing the the uh recommendations to address that. But uh yes, this this project's gone through full geotech evaluation and and uh um has been signed off on by the geotech engineers as well as the structural engineers.
That be the same engineers that signed off on station two?
No, sir.
All right, good. And uh I guess I'm I'm excited and glad we got this in under budget. Um excited to take care of the firefighters that are there to uh to uh to come at us at at any time when we need them. Um I I I really appreciate the new um protocols and you know, the the way that we've got the the dirty side and the clean side and the transition to keep all the carcinogens out. Um so it's it's quite amazing walking through one of the older fire stations and then going out to station eight to see what we're doing for the uh the health and se- health and safety. So thank you for that.
Council, any further questions or comments?
Um I would just uh just to kind of couple what uh member Carbone said. Uh I think uh after uh two and three were designed and built and one uh also had um issues. Um staff recommended we not use that architectural and design team. Um and I think uh we're certainly seeing the value of the team that we uh that we have now. Um I'm not sure who did the the civil engineering on this. It wasn't me, but uh I'm sure that uh I'm sure that they did um uh they did their due diligence, uh particularly now that uh um Trent and his team are paying closer attention to these uh these facilities.
Trent, the only problem we had on station four on there is uh the with the flooring on it. Number one, the contractor used river rock, which wasn't good, you know, it's concrete. And it's hall was uh eight miles further than what it was, so it was very wet when it come in. And after a period of time, we had to break out that floor and uh report through there is what happened. So the, you know, the geotech wasn't a problem. It's the foundation and floor that we had to do.
Well, one of the benefits of having longstanding project staff is we learn from our mistakes and we don't repeat them, so.
Yeah. If you remember item number uh station four was really built for voluntary fire department.
Yes, sir.
They did not have provisions for staff to remain dormant there, a resident there. And uh I think this is because it's a full-blown fire department, which is greatly needed out in that part of town. Any question, comment, council at this point? I don't hear much. Madam Secretary, I love most second on the floor.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash two zero six.
Moving to new bit, oh new business item number seven, I'm a less uh staff like uh play to pick us up for us at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um city's had uh contracted out for our solid waste uh pickup and disposal services. Uh you know, very uh important endeavor and uh had a a good relationship, but uh that's been a longstanding contract. And uh council back in January agreed with the need to put that out on the market for competitive proposals. And so we've spent last months in uh following up on that and uh we're ready to uh uh bring you the results of some of that uh work. And Mr. Pearson's going to lead you through a presentation, so.
Uh Mayor, if I could interject, this is member Hernandez. I'm going to sit this one out. I'm recusing myself on this item. Thank you.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, and uh good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased tonight to be able to present you uh with the results and recommendations from our request for proposals for our solid waste contract. As uh mentioned, uh the solid waste contract is our uh our single largest annual contract. And we've been with the same provider for over twenty-five years, uh good service over those years. But uh in January, the city council decided that we would move forward with this RFP and uh put our solid waste contract out for competition. Um so tonight in the presentation, we're going to cover uh the timeline of the uh RFP, the RFP evaluation process. Uh we're going to touch on the franchise fee to uh take a look at where we want to set that. Uh look at the different service options that were uh bid in the RFP to to select which service option to move forward with. Uh go through all the cost summaries for the residential as well as the commercial portions of the RFP and then uh cover the recommendation. Uh next slide, please. So prior to publishing the RFP, we spent many months uh developing the RFP uh and the contract, associated contract, uh soliciting feedback from uh citizens through a citizen survey on solid waste to find out what was important to our citizens here. Uh what we found there is a strong preference to move away from our current bag service. Um and so um in addition to that, uh at our early budget input session in February with the council, uh we discussed the RFP and uh input from from you, the council, uh was provided on multiple items, including which options we would bid as part of the RFP and also link the contract. Um so with that feedback, the RFP and the contract were developed and shared with council uh through various Thursday packets, uh along with the RFP scoring criteria, um all prior to publishing the RFP. Uh and that brings us to the timeline in front of you. Uh we posted the RFP July fifteenth. Uh had a at a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, uh closed the RFP on September third and then started evaluating those. Uh we had the uh initial uh reviews completed by September eighteenth and then uh completed the interviews of the finalists by October second. And we're here tonight on October twelfth to kind of to discuss the results of of that evaluation with us targeting October twenty-six for uh award of the solid waste contract. Uh next slide, please. So I just want to uh give credit where credit's due with our evaluation team real quickly. Uh we had uh Len Lantrip. He was our consultant and industry expert that we hired from SWS to help us go through this process. Uh internally, we had Nancy Massey with our utility billing group, Rance Rayne with code enforcement, John McCarter with finance, uh David Van Riper with Public Works and Lori Rodriguez with Public Works. And uh want to give Lori special thanks here. She really drove the process, kept us on track, uh helped put the the presentation together uh throughout this, so uh appreciate her efforts throughout this. Um so these people uh represent all the departments and divisions here at City Pearland that are associated with some part of our solid waste contract. So they all have a very vested interest in selecting the best value provider for our citizens. Um so it's a great group. Um as you see in front of we, in front of you, we had uh five proposers. Um we initially evaluated those and uh selected three of those firms to move forward with interviews. So uh the firms that that did not move forward into the interviews, a couple of points there. Um with their proposal submitted, uh we did not feel that they provided very solid detailed operation and transition plan, especially compared to the other three firms. Um additionally, um the acceptable percentage of contamination and recycling materials for those two firms was just too low. Um as part of the RFP, uh we uh requested what would be the maximum contamination rate for uh recyclable material. And uh those two firms set it at ten percent and twelve percent. Well, we're currently at about twenty-five percent and the other three firms set that at twenty-five percent. Uh the purpose for doing that is part, part of the RFP was really to protect the city uh from any additional cost in the future by exceeding what would be an acceptable contamination rate and getting that rate set as part of the process. Um so as a result, there was a clear break in the scores between the top three firm versus the the other two firms. Uh next slide, please. So the process itself was really a two-step process once the the uh proposals were submitted. Uh the seven member team individually reviewed all the proposals, scored each of those based on the criteria set forth in the RFP um without the benefit of any cost information influencing influencing them. Uh it it focused on the operational plans, the transition plan, customer service and reporting. Um and then once those scores were completed, um the scores for the cost portion of the RFP was added to that. And really, at that point, that's when we developed our consensus on interviewing the three firms. So step two was to bring those firms in for interviews, uh really providing the evaluation team an opportunity to delve further into their proposals, ask questions where we wanted more information. Uh you know, prod on areas where we didn't feel they covered it well enough and really get them to elaborate on on the uh their proposals. Um after the interviews, uh we scored the interviews and then uh the evaluation team convened and looked at that. And uh from that point, really uh getting consensus onto the selection and the provider that provides the best fit for the city's needs. Uh next slide, please. Um so before we jump into the scores and the cost and the options, uh we wanted to quickly present our recommendations on changes to the franchise fee because it partially establishes what the costs are to our customers. Um that that's going to be presented in the next several slides. So currently for residential, uh the the franchise fees are fifteen percent and on commercial industrial eighteen percent. We're proposing to make those both fifteen percent, just more equitable distribution between our residential and commercial um as well as easier to administer. It's just one number. Um and and just do want to recognize it has a small impact on the general fund, but we're aware of that. Finance is aware of that and we'll work through that. Uh next slide, please. So getting into uh the different residential service options, um this basically lays out the different options that were put forth and then runs out the cost per month as well as the total city annual cost based on uh the recommended provider. So option one, uh it was based on our current service, um where uh our customers put out the bags twice a week. They have a recycle cart that's picked up once per week and then bulk and brush is picked up once per week. So our current uh cost there, uh all in with franchise fees and taxes is twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, about eight point seven seven million dollars annually. And this is based on thirty-five thousand two hundred uh residential customers, which is roughly where we are today. Option two was to move to carts for trash service one time a week. Keep the same one time a week for recycle carts, same one time a week for bulk and brush service. And uh that cost in the proposals uh for the recommended provider, sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents all in, so about seven million dollars. And then option three is to go with carts two times a week on trash, so we keep the same trash pickup uh schedule. Uh keep recycling on one time a week and then bulk and brush one time a week, and that's nineteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. So um some of the additional services that were that were uh part of the uh cost proposal was everybody had to provide a cost for pink tag service. So this is where if you've got more bags than will fit in your ninety-six gallon uh capacity cart, uh you can purchase the tags sixty-five cents a piece uh to be able to put those bags out along with your cart. Um and uh and then uh the other thing is for those that need more capacity, a nice, a second ninety-six gallon cart at seven dollars and one cents per month. Um so you know, uh the other, the other piece of that is for our senior or disabled people that we would have an at-door service. Next slide, please. So our recommendation, uh staff recommendation is move forward with option two and just some of the reasons for that. Um the option three, carts two time a week, is is about nineteen percent higher than option two. Um eighty-one percent of uh and and this eighty-one percent of our respondents to the survey preferred carts as opposed to bags. So that's really uh you know, that's in support of moving to carts away from bags, not necessarily how frequent. Um the carts are obviously environmentally and aesthetically better than bags with the, you see the pictures there. We've all seen those multiple times in multiple places. Um so it's just uh it'll, it's a better look. Uh you know, we don't have people having to go uh deal with the 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 birds and the critters and things like that. Um reduced wear and tear on streets if we go with the one time a week. Uh those heavy trucks put a a big burden and load on our on our city streets. So uh we were picking up one time or less a week and it reduced that wear and tear. And then there are options for those small number of residents and instances requiring additional capacity um by purchasing low-cost pink tags or the additional cost per month. So we kind of looked at the additional, wh- when we looked at the survey, uh there was about twelve percent of our uh residents that responded saying they had five or more bags per week. Um and and a ninety-six gallon cart's good for six to seven bags. So you know, for a small number of our our customers, um we looked at it as uh you could uh have an additional cart uh for those customers uh and not have to increase everybody else's rates at the same time. Next slide, please. So um some other changes or items of note with residential service is that uh green waste to be collected with brush and bulk pickup. Uh currently, we've got a, you know, it's got to be bagged separately and set out separately, so this makes it a little simpler, easier. Um municipal solid waste will be not, will not be taken to any landfills within or adjacent to the city of Pearland. Um and then uh if if we were to move forward with option two, uh the one time a week trash, uh one time a week everything, then uh we would be looking at being able to pick everything up on the same day. People wouldn't have to remember which day do I do this, which day do I do that? Um and then uh as uh as discussed with council, we put out a, put this out as a base five-year contract with a five-year renewal option, an option for a seven and three. Uh there was no discount with this uh recommended vendor for going with the seven and three, so we're recommending a five-year contract. And then a change from our previous contract, we do have liquidated damages in this contract for uh non-performance as well as a hundred percent performance bond requirement. Um if if it were to come to that, of course, we don't don't expect and don't don't wish to see that, but just in case. Uh next slide, please. So going into to the overall scoring, you'll see at the top there, this is all based on option two, but the differences are very similar if we go with option uh three. But Frontier Waste Solutions, uh their proposal, and this is for commercial, industrial, as well as residential combined, uh doesn't include all the uh franchise fees and taxes and things, but what was proposed, uh nine point eight five million dollars FCCSA at eleven point five and waste management and taxes at eleven point seven. Um so from there, you see the points based on on the uh the cost and then the other uh portions or the other rating criteria. So compliance and clarity of proposal, minimal exceptions to the RFP and contract. So one of the, I think, the unique things we did with this is we put the contract out with the RFP and then we asked the uh the the proposers to spell out any exceptions they had to that contract that that uh they had issues with. Um the purpose of that is is that once we are uh ready to make a decision, we do not have a protracted uh contract negotiation. Uh we put the contract out there. They've been able to provide any objections that they have to that. And then they were scored on, you know, how many, how how many uh objections or or issues or questions they had about the contract. So um our recommended provider uh had no exceptions to the contract, so they're they're prepared to move forward. Um it's uh next one is experience providing like services like cities, um strength of personnel at the hauling division, operational plan in narrative format, transition plan to new vendor and service model. So you know, whether it was a transition plan for a new vendor or just transitioning from bags to carts, um they 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 provided that information in that portion of the uh uh RFP. Um and then they were rated on customer service, contract compliance, reporting, use of technology and GPS, those sort of things. Uh we reviewed the financial strength of the proposers and then you see the interview score. So in the end, obviously, very, very close uh in the end uh between between the top two here. Um and uh with the the big difference there in the overall cost, um we're recommending moving forward with Frontier uh Waste Solutions. Uh next slide, please. So gonna run through a a little more extensive, you know, cost analysis here um of the RFP. So um this is uh solid waste and recycling cost per household per month. And the left column there is our current cost. This is with the uh franchise fees and the taxes. So these are the actual numbers, you know, current number versus the proposed numbers on that our uh our customers, our citizens will see on their actual bills between uh between where we are now and what was proposed. So sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents there for Frontier Waste versus uh nineteen seventy is our current cost. Uh next slide, please. Um so then we just took those same cost and annualized those, rolled them out monthly and then annually. So you can see uh um the recommended option there. Uh the cost is about seven million dollars versus the current eight point three. Um and next slide, please. And then uh this is the analysis on the uh commercial cost. So this, we didn't add the So this, we didn't add the franchise fees and taxes back in there, just showing you kind of where we, where we stand versus current and between the different vendors. There's very little difference between any of these here. So the true cost difference in the overall proposals is really on the residential side. So it'll be what our residency as far as any reduction in cost or what, that's the big difference between the different vendors here. And then just wanted to point out that all commercial customers will be receiving new dumpsters under this as well. Next slide, please. So moving into the recommendation, the RFP review team recommends Frontier Solid Waste Solutions as the highest ranked firm, providing the best value to the city of Pearland. Next slide. So a little bit about Frontier Waste Solutions. They currently serve over one hundred twenty five thousand residential customers in Texas. While under Frontier Waste Solutions, they, they've only been under that for, for, since twenty seventeen. That was actually a merger of other solid waste companies owned by the same people. And even before owned by this ownership group had been in business for, for, for well over twenty years. So there, there was an original garbage service they acquired in twenty fifteen, which then they merged later on with another group to form Frontier K two, which is currently, which is Frontier Waste Solutions today. So that's a little bit more of the history of, of the companies as far as their, how long they've been in business. The owners are very experienced waste management folks and they're very experienced as well and starting service and operating in cities is large or larger than Pearland. And I'll, I'll just introduce them right now. They're, they're available to us when we get to the end today if we have any questions, but representing Frontier Waste Solutions tonight is Mr. Bill Killian and Mr. John Gustafson. And Mr. Killians are South Texas VP. He'll be our point of contact and Mr. Gustafson is the president and CEO. Both of these, both of these guys are part of the Frontier Waste Solutions ownership team. And like I said, they'll be available for questions when we, when we get to the end here. So just a little bit more about Frontier Waste Solution as part of the RFP and as we talked through it with them in the interview process, they have shown the financing commitments to be able to invest over ten million dollars in Pearland and that'll cover, you know, new trucks, the seventy thousand plus carts, new dumpsters and all those things. They, they have shown us the commitments from the truck, cart and container manufacturers that they can meet the schedule to have this, this service up and running a year from now. And then they really demonstrated a lot of the flexibility of their company where they want to operate locally. They want to have dedicated local customer service. And they do this for a lot, if not all of their customers is they're flexible to what their customers' needs are. And then they've got a lot of customer focused technology and so just internal focused technology that, that we're going to be able to avail ourselves to and be able to customize and get timely reporting as well. Next slide, please. So just a couple more things, just to kind of sum it all up. Frontier Waste Solutions is proposing to stand up a local in city of Pearland's facility that'll house their fleet and their equipment, their fleet maintenance, their customer service personnel, as well as their operational personnel. And they indicated that they will have a preference to hire locally for any new people that they have to bring on board. Customer service will have our own dedicated customer representatives that will only support our contracts and our Pearland residents. So have backup for that if, if there's any issues there throughout their company, but we, you know, the, the purpose there is to have people familiar with our contract, familiar with our city to be able to really provide top notch customer service. And then, you know, they've got an app available as well for our residents to provide a lot of customer service as well and get push notifications when, when the dates change because of holidays or when they need to request pink tags or they need to request a special service or anything like that. Next slide. Last couple of items is technology. So they use a software called Track EZ. It's a live interactive tracking, issues tracking software. And they will, they're going to actually give us access to that. So when, you know, as issues are being tracked, we know that they're being taken care of. We're able to add issues to that. We're able to make sure anybody that calls us instead of calling the customer service people that that is taken care of as well. And then that'll give us, you know, reports at our fingertips for daily week, weekly and monthly metrics that we can run ourselves or request they run at any point. Again, the, the app and then the, the trucks are outfitted with all kinds of technology to make sure they're tracking the trucks as well as any missed services or anything like that. And they're going to allow the city to have access to that information as well. I think that's important because we do get some of the calls. They don't, they don't, we do get citizens that call us instead of calling our solid waste provider for some things and, you know, instead of trying to route them around to get them the right person, if it's just a question of, hey, they hadn't picked my trash up yet, we may be able to answer that question quick by having access to this and say, yeah, the truck's just around the corner. So last piece is checking references. And we called several of the, the cities that do work with Frontier Waste today and wanted to talk to them, to them about the transition process, their customer service and just kind of everything associated with doing business with Frontier. And you see some of the comments here that, that the, the transition was smooth and seamless. Their customer service is great. The Frontier treats them like they're their only customer and little to no issues when they arise. Frontier responds quickly. I just want to add one more thing, you know, Frontier, when we were interviewing them, they, you know, they understand the size of our contract relative to their, their current customer base and really made it a point to emphasize that, that, you know, this, they know that this will be important to them and they are going to make sure that this is a good, smooth process for us. And that a year from now, you know, this has stood up with as little headache and as much information shared with our citizens as we need to make sure everybody knows what's coming and what changes may be coming as we move forward. So next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to just kind of conclude here that we need to tonight, you know, settle on a, selecting a service option. You know, we've recommended a service option. We're not, you know, that's not real hard, fast, strong, you know, service option recommendation, but it's the one that we saw provided the, the best cost and still provided great service. We want to confirm the franchise fee that we proposed and then answer any questions you have about the, the recommended solid waste provider. Thank you, Mayor.
Any, any question from council at this point?
Mayor, I have several questions. This is Woody. Number one, from what I gather and what was in this proposal is that they only have one residential and it's sixty four hundred households and three hundred and sixty business accounts. And they only have one and it, it only started in September of this year. And how does that measure up against thirty six thousand households and twelve hundred businesses, you know, that we have? And that's a concern there, but the biggest concern that I have.
So Member Owens, you know, they, they do have a hundred and twenty five thousand residential customers. You know, that may be their one single largest account.
Well, that's the last one I heard it after calling up there that Bob Springs. They just started that account up there in September of this year. But, but the thing about it, the big concern that I have, Trent, on this, two of the firms were not accepted into this, I guess whatever is Waste Connection and WCA for failure to meet minimum requirements. And they were taken out. And then when I look down here, what y'all had in, in there and of course, you know, going back, city council has not been involved in this from, from day one. So this is all different news to us. But as a part of that, we asked for a company to have a five year minimum years of experience in contracts and, and similar contracts the size of Pearland, which this firm did not have. And so I'm wondering, and this Darren, you may correct me on this, but if we kick out two firms for not being able to meet those and these other two requirements, this firm did not meet, but yet still they're recommended. And I didn't know.
Member Owens, the, the, the two firms were evaluated in the first step of the process, but based on their very minimal addressing of the operation or the transitional plan coupled with their very, very low threshold for contaminants in the, in the recycle stream, we did not move them to the second phase. And as far as the RFP, you know, it was not an absolute on, on the, the, the number of years in business or, or size of customers. You know, it said the city's looking for a contractor with not less than five years experience providing residential solid waste and collection service in communities with a customer account similar size of city of Pearland's customer base. And then, of course, in the RFP itself, we reserve the right to accept proposals which deviate from the RFP as the city deems appropriate and in its best interest. So when, when we looked at Frontier Waste and really delved down and questioned them, you know, the, the, the company under this name may have been formed in twenty seventeen, but it's made up of companies that were, were under the same, same ownership prior to that dating back to twenty fifteen. And if you look at the experience of the people that run the company, they're well suited and understand the, the requirements to run a contract of this size and larger. So while that was, was a, that was, you know, one of the, the, the big things that we delved into as the committee reviewing this. But, you know, when they were able to, to show that they do have the financial wherewithal to take on a contract of this size. And, and then they also not only have the financial wherewithal, you know, it, 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 it does look like a, you know, much large, we're a much larger city, but if you look at their overall portfolio, they estimate when, i- if we are to move forward with them, once we're on board, that we'd be about fifteen percent of their overall business. So that's, it's, you know, it's not like we're doubling or tripling their business. We'll be a piece of that. And so I think they have demonstrated to us that they, they have the wherewithal to take on a contract of this size and the, the experience to, to service a contract of this size. So that's, that's where we were as a committee.
Yeah, I noticed on, on your page that you put out there the financial. You gave a three O on a financial, which is the same thing that you gave Waste Management. And Waste Management is the largest contractor in the United States.
Yes, sir. That, that is actually.
And so I was just wondering on that, how we could actually do that, but you know.
So the way, the way that score is derived is that our finance department has put together a, basically a scoring matrix based on the financial documents that we request as part of the RFP. And then based on those, they're, you know, they're either, you know, given a point for this or deducted a point for this and it, it takes into account everything, you know, it's just, it's not just the size of the company, but the financial, you know, health of the company and, you know, if one company's got more debt, a larger percentage of debt, they may not score as well as a, a, a company that, that isn't as leveraged as much on debt, even though they're a much larger company. So that's, you know, I asked the same question. And, you know, I was walked through how our finance department put that together to, to evaluate all companies that we go out and, and do RFPs for to score their financial health and was satisfied that, that it's, you know, it's a solid process that they use and then, you know, it, it, it takes into account, you know, the financial health, not necessarily the size of the company.
Okay. And they have no recycling capabilities. That has to be a third partner come in on that or a third person to come in on, on that because they have no capabilities in there.
Yes, sir. That, so that's, you know, commonly done through contracts that they already have in place. The recycling, the MRF that they, they plan to use is actually FCC, which was the other firm we evaluated. It's their facility. It's, it's a local here, Houston State Yard. They service all of city of Houston's recycling is my understanding.
Yeah. And they have no landfill. So it's my understanding, they won't go to Republic's out there and really get the west side of town concerned again. And, and they have to go, I guess, either to Angleton or to Alvin to be able to do that.
Yes, sir. So not, none of, no one that proposed, proposed to use the Blue Ridge. But they all have contracts with each other. They all use each others and have swap agreements and things like that. So they did provide us with the documentation that says they have the, the agreements in place to be able to use the, the, the landfills that they proposed in Alvin.
Okay. So that is a waste management landfill. What happens if they get us a price increase for either, either one of those activities, they will have to come back to the city to ask for a price increase since they're a third party on it and they can't control where they take their solid waste or, or any things like that. And there, if those prices go up, they have to come back, right?
So the, the cost increase clauses of the contract are, they're based on the CPI only. So we no longer have the fuel modifier in this. It'll be CPI only. It does have a similar clause to what we have now that if, if there's an unforeseen thing, they can, they can ask for additional costs and they have to document that. So, I mean, it would be up to us to whether, whether we're okay for approving that or not.
Yeah, yeah. And then that cost would be passed along to the residents in, in Pearland.
Only if, only if the city council approves those additional costs.
And what if we didn't?
Much like our current contract that has a hundred and eighty day cancellation clause for the contractor, it'll have a similar thing. We've extended that out to instead of six months, nine months in case anyone were to avail themselves to that, then we'd have time to, to stand up another contract.
Okay. Yeah. That's the only thing that I have on here is, you know, there's several things that just, you know, kind of jumps out at you of a company coming in and what they're doing. They're not a, a company that's been in business for a long time. They're jumping out and buying other companies that maybe have gone down the hill and they buying them and they putting them in their portfolio. And so some of the concerns that some of the people in the other areas concerned about, which not, doesn't bother me any, they're looking to get a big contract out of Pearland so they can be bought. And that's none of my business through that, if that's what they want to do, you know, but, but it is from what I gather and then talking to the, the company that are actually the place where they get the other contract that they had since September that it's too new to evaluate their capabilities. That's all I have. Let it go.
Well, seems like you hit on all the waste management's talking points, Woody.
I think, uh, let me, uh, ask a few questions that are related to, I think, exactly what kind of service we want. First, I would, I think we had, we had somebody in public comment that had a concern about Member Owens and I discussing or having a meeting with, with Waste Management. I'll just say that I can't speak for Mr. Owen, or Member Owens, other than I, I trust his judgment and I'm not seeing him do anything that I don't think is in best service to the city. I could tell you that at least the, the result of my meeting with Waste Management is I did not agree with what they were proposing, which was to extend the existing contract and allow for the, for them to modify over to can. So that's why we pushed in that direction. I think that Waste Management contract had extended without bid for far too long and it needed to be bid, which was the, the result of that meeting and several other meetings that I've had with them. That's kind of where we are right now. I've really pushed heavily for us to, to rebid this since this contract has gone on for so long without having an opportunity to reevaluate the price. But I do appreciate that you brought up that concern. I think it's fair, you know, the reason that we have to, have to make those disclosures is so that y'all were aware of, of that kind of activity when that does occur, whereas it may be, it does happen sometimes. I would say, look, I'm, I'm comfortable moving with Frontier. Trent, I appreciate you speaking with me earlier and having a kind of a long form discussion and pre-preparing some of the, the, the concerns I had into the presentation. I would say for me, while I appreciate. I would say for me, um, while I appreciate the associated savings with uh once a week pickup, I, I just don't want to do that to our citizens. What we had discussed particularly going out to bid was that the only thing that we were considering adding was cans for the trash service to address a lot of the concerns we heard from the citizens, particularly on the west side, particularly the ones over by Blue Ridge where there are a lot of um vultures and other birds that eat, uh, eat the landfill trash that come over and eat their bag trash that we would provide the cans. I don't want to wholesale change this um to a once a week service, make significant changes, switch, we'd be switching out recycle cans, we'd be adding this other can, we'd be communicating new route schedules. Uh, it would just offer up a lot of confusion, uh, probably has some significant amount of irritation. And personally, I don't want to do that. I would also say personally, um, you know, I, I don't uh, I produce a lot of trash in my house. I have three kids. I have um uh sometimes an, an additional um family member that stays with us on occasion. We host parties. It's, it's not uncommon that we, we would fill a trash can and the recycling can uh routinely. I don't think I'm rare, you know, maybe the percentage is, is correct uh based on the survey. But uh, I know that if I leave trash in the can that I have in my garage, uh, if it's there for longer a week, particularly during the summer, it starts becoming pretty nasty and um I won't get into details, but I mean, it does, I mean, if it's bag trash and it's sitting in there, I may open it up and find I have a few more pets. And I don't necessarily want to see that happen uh across the city. While it may be that that can is not routinely filled twice a week as it could be once a week, I would much rather us continue to have the twice a week service. Particularly when you get into the holiday season. Uh, Christmas, if you, if you're, if your day lands on Christmas, Christmas and New Year's end up being the same day. Uh, they're seven days apart and then you miss trash on both of those days. It could be three weeks before you have service uh provided. Or at least we have to come up with some odd way of communicating to the citizens that when that's going to get picked up on a different day. I, I, I just, all things lead to, let's just keep two weeks of service. Let's try and keep the route schedule as close to what it currently is right now. The only thing I would want to change is the cans. Trent, I appreciate you adding the information about the green waste and how that's going to get picked up and incorporated. I know that's been a lot, a, a question I've received from a lot of citizens of whether, you know, whether we're going to continue that program. Um, and when that's going to get picked up. Same thing with the heavy bulk trash. Again, a lot of citizens concerned about, uh, you know, can they still put out heavy bulk trash once we get into cans? I appreciate the provision that we can control where our waste goes. I'd like it to be firm in the contract that we can absolutely spec- uh specify that even through a swap agreement that our trash does not end up in Blue Ridge. While I believe that Republic Waste has worked very hard and put a lot of effort to resolve the, the long, the, the systemic problems we've had out there. And we're getting less and less complaints. We did make a commitment to the citizens that live in the west side that we would, upon reviewing this contract, add the provision that we can't that we can control that the trash not go to Blue Ridge. I would like that to be firm and definitive in this contract. Again, you addressed uh Frontier's history. I, I think it's probably, it would probably not be my preference to go with Frontier if all things were equal, given the relative short history of the company as a combined entity. But I appreciate the extra work to put into it. A- as I, as explained to you um earlier, uh Trent, and as I explained to others that I've been talking to about this, I, I can't, I can't, can't get over the twenty percent additional cost if we choose another entity. Both FCC who, who didn't bid option three a- a- at all. So we, if we went with option three, we couldn't use them without having to rebid the whole thing.
Uh, uh, they did, they did. The only uh person that didn't bid is uh Waste Management did not bid our current service.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I apologize. I misread that. FCC um uh FCC and Waste Management were both higher than that and, and significantly higher, twenty percent uh higher. And you know, we owe it to the citizens to try and get this value down, uh, assuming that all things are equal. And I, you know, honestly, I, you know, I trust staff. I trust that they put in the effort. They're the ones that have to deal with this on a day to day basis. If Frontier does not perform, so they, they bear the lion's share of the responsibility if stuff doesn't go right. So uh, I trust that they vetted this um and uh the answers that they provided us are um, address the concerns. I would like us I would like us to be very clear in the eventual contract uh about um the threshold for liquidated damages. I know it's kind of laid out in there, but I want us to be very clear that there's not going to be a whole lot of tolerance for repeat errors. I also wanted to be very clear um with respect to um performance bond, if they don't perform, that we won't tolerate them not being able to perform. This is a, I know this is a big jump for them. Fifteen percent of additional revenue, uh, while fifteen percent is a may, may seem like a small amount of a hundred, it's actually a significant amount for any company to jump that that amount of additional revenue in a year. And I want to make sure that they can scale. And if they run into issue scaling uh to serve us, I want us to be able to make a relatively quick decision to terminate with them and move over to another vendor if it cannot perform. I just, I don't want to be stuck in a five-year contract with somebody who's just not uh living up to uh, to snuff. I do agree with the five-year contract as opposed to seven-year contract uh with the five-year extension. I think that that's a um uh, that gives essentially most of the members of this council who are currently on an opportunity, or not most of them, but a good chunk of the uh members of this council who are currently on and those who are currently running and likely paying attention to this, an opportunity to re-review this contract, know what we talked about when we come, when it comes up again. So that that information is relatively fresh. The other um, yeah, the other guidance you were looking for was with respect to the franchise tax. Look, I, I don't I don't necessarily think it's necessary to reduce the commercial te- uh franchise tax from eighteen to fifteen, but I'll accept your recommendation since you say the value, the value of the general fund is relatively minimal and it evens things out. So I'm comfortable going with the fifteen percent um, fifteen percent franchise fee for both uh commercial and residential as recommended by staff. I think that's fine. The one thing that I would want to add to the contract, we have a provision in there for liquidated damages if they pick up residential trash before seven AM. I think we also need to have a proviso in there about picking up commercial uh trash too early. We've received a number of complaints in the past uh about commercial businesses adjacent to residential businesses where they were picking up the trash too early. You know, we shouldn't have, they shouldn't be picking up any trash before seven AM. They shouldn't be uh producing a whole lot of noise, particularly when they're grabbing dumpsters and jostling them next to residential areas uh early, early in the, early in the day or late in the evening. So I want to control those times as well. But again, I'm perfectly comfortable moving forward with uh, with Frontier. I I'm, I'm, I, I would say I'm, I'm a little trepidatious with their history and how much growth, but I trust staff vetted this appropriately.
Thanks, sir. Uh, maybe just to address a couple of, of your uh comments, you know, there is a termination by default clause in there. It does give a uh, a thirty day cure period. And I think if, if they can show that uh it takes longer to cure, then they do get up to ninety days. But really at that point, uh, that's the purpose of the performance bond being in there. So I think it's a pretty strong clause. And then uh, just one other comment on the franchise fee. I know a part, part of uh, I think what led us there is at one point during the discussion with council, it was you know, there was a comment to, to make sure that the cost for uh the commercial service really does not, uh, you're not, you know, shifting any cost over there um to reduce any cost on the residents. And so that was actually something we put in the uh, the RFP that, that we didn't want anything unbalanced that way. We really wanted this priced for what it takes to serve these different classes of customers. And then I think, uh, you know, then bringing that down and making them equal doesn't put any additional burden on our, our uh businesses that uh above and beyond what we have for the residents. So that was a little bit more of the thought behind that, but thank you for your comments and took notes on the, the contract things uh you, you mentioned.
I, I appreciate the explanation on the franchise fee. I'd like to hear what the other council members ha- have to say. Uh, I'm, I, I, I think I've expressed in this past, I, I am more of the thought to have the model as, as we balance the city from commercial to bedrooms. From a bedroom community to one that has a, a mix of uses in here, that a lot more of the burden for funding the city and its services fall on the commercial users. Uh, I think that creates a healthier city and it's a healthier model. But I'll um, I, I will acquiesce to the fifteen fifteen on commercial versus residential, but I would not protest if we stayed at eighteen and fifteen. And I, I know the value you told me, Trent, was an extra, extra a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not a huge loss to our general fund, but uh if it's paying for something, there's something we have to reevaluate when it comes to budget time. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what we're spending right now and would likely have to come out of um a property tax in order to make up the delta. So um, again, just interested in seeing what the other council members have to say on that subject.
So uh, this is for Mr. Epperson. You said that um, this company serves cities, other cities our size? What, what cities are those?
Yeah, sir. I did, I did not say that. They don't serve anyone our size.
Okay, so we would be the largest city.
Yes, sir. I, I think what I was talking about is that the owners and, and principals in the company and those that'll be managing our contract. They've been in the industry for a long time and they've managed, uh, they've stood up contracts of this size and larger and they've managed contracts of this size and larger. So I, I was just trying to give a sense that uh what they imparted upon us is that they, they have that experience. They know how to do that and they've done it before.
Okay, and what is the other option? So we know that they're going to use the landfill on Alvin. What is the second option if they can't go to Alvin for whatever reason?
So in the RFP, they just listed the Alvin um landfill. In a discussion with them, they mentioned using the uh Lone Star Transfer Station. I don't know exactly where that's going. They may be able to answer that. They're on the line tonight, or that's something we can definitely have uh before we bring this back to you as well.
Okay, and uh, just one last question. Councilmember Perez and Owens pretty much took a lot of my stuff. What, what logo will be on the recycle cans and the um trash cans?
What logo?
Yeah, will it be the company's logo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm, I believe that's what uh they showed.
Okay, and, and I'm in favor of doing the cans, but twice a week. I don't see how you can get by with once a week. Uh, I've been a long proponent of, of this. I knew trash cans were coming our way for many years now. I've had bad experience with doing it once a week. It just doesn't work. And I don't think it's going to work for, for Pearland either, so.
Yes, sir.
And my other question is why can we not have businesses choose to use their own trash disposal? I think it's kind of, I don't know, it, it's it's a little difficult for me to, you know, say, okay, well, every business in Pearland has to use this trash disposal company because the city uses it. What if I was able to get a better deal from somebody else as a business owner? Why, why couldn't I use that?
So I think, I think the reason city uh, cities do it this way is because if, if you open it up, it's, it's really, you know, it's a I'll say free for all. Um, and you can have, then you'll have multiple providers running trucks in your city. You know, your quality control is going to go down. You know, making sure if they have spills or hydraulic leaks or anything are dealt with um is going to be more difficult. And you know, issues like picking up too early and things like that is just really something that would make it very, very difficult for us to uh, to manage and, and, and uh have any oversight over as you do when you do it like this with a franchise where they get, they, they're the one that gets all the business in the city. It's, we're still pricing that out. We're still taking competitive numbers for that. You see the numbers, you know, are competitive. That doesn't mean that somebody can't come in and undercut them, but they, you know, I think that that invites a lot of um, you know, one-offs and issues that uh will make it difficult for, for us to make sure that we've got the, the appearance in our city and and uh, and, and that service is occurring when we want it to occur moving forward.
Okay. Very weak, Trent. You're going to do it, keeping them under one umbrella, both services.
One, one other question. Um, in, in our, in our contract that we had with Waste Management, they provided like um X amount of porta potties per year or something for, you know, events and stuff like that is.
Sir, so uh, thi- this uh proposal and, and contract will include uh basically the same number of special events. The same number of services to the city. Um, really, all of the, those types of services are going to stay the same. And it's a, it's kind of the changes we've talked about uh throughout this process that, that uh with the carts and, and the frequency, well, looks like we may not be changing frequency, but moving to carts. It, it, those are the kind of things that, that are changing in this um where we tried to keep all those other kind of base things equal.
Okay, so we'll still have that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have for now. And well, I, one other question. When will this come back to us to actually award the, the bid since tonight we're just giving direction on options on the.
So we get good, clean, clear direction tonight and uh, and, and not any uh significant um things that come up that we may have to work through from a contractual standpoint. And our, our plan is to bring it back as you see here uh at the next council meeting. You know, the, the contract was put out with the RFP, so everybody's had a chance to review that contract. So we should not have any extended contract negotiations. I think, you know, a couple of things I've heard tonight is, you know, we want to make sure that it's a it's a clear in the contract of uh, that uh, and I think the way we'll set this up on, on disposal sites is that we'll identify acceptable disposal sites based on their, their uh RFP and anything else that they may want to add at this point. And that uh, we can write those into the contract and that if they want to use any different ones from those disposal sites, they have to get city approval. I haven't talked to them about that, but based on the conversation tonight, that's kind of the, what we're thinking along the lines of to, to address that issue. You know, I, I'll, I'll check. We may already have something in there about how early commercial can be dealt with. It seems like I kind of remember that. And then uh you know, I think the, the, the other things have been talked about, the liquidated damages are, are pretty clear how they're, how they're laid out. We just have to implement those if there's issues.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that if we are not going to be able to use the Alvin landfill for whatever reason, we don't end up getting some kind of surcharge for going into Houston if we're mandating that they don't use Blue Ridge.
Yes, sir. I mean, they've identified what's available to them.
So Tris, uh, is this a uh for the two garbage days and uh one recycle day, right?
So that was one of the options that we took uh proposals on and, and we've heard from uh uh member Moore and member Perez that they would prefer the two times a week trash, one time a week recycling option.
Yeah.
Option three.
We don't, we don't want to change that, you know, from, from the people that in the area.
Do y'all, y'all want to provide guidance on what y'all believe we should do with the franchise fee, which is the other question staff has of us?
Yeah, I'll dive in. I mean, I, I'd like to stick with the two times a week as is. Looking at the numbers, that's going to be, going to be a net increase of seven cents a month. And it's going to get us the ninety-six gallon cart, so um, I, I like that. I, I don't mind the uh, the changes to the franchise fee. The only question I had is in terms of ramp up uh for timing, um, they say it's going to take, what, about a year?
So that, they've got a, a schedule and a plan based on the year that we have. You know, when we discussed it with them, um, you know, they said that uh, that, that's plenty of time. If they had to, they could ramp up a little uh sooner than that. It's really, you know, getting the trucks outfitted and delivered and that's about a six-month proposition. Getting uh carts, you know, takes a couple of months. So it's really a, a laid out plan to start the communication early. You know, they, they plan to uh, you know, have, work with us on a lot of the communication stuff that goes to the residents that we put out on social media. All those things about the change that's going to come. And then from the commercial side, uh, you know, they want to personally visit all the commercial businesses to talk. all the commercial businesses to talk to them about the change and how they plan on swapping out the container and trying to make that as seamless as possible. So, you know, a lot of that time is, is working through the communications and as part of the transition plan. You know, if it had to be accelerated, it could, it could be done.
So it can't, they can be ramped up in six months?
I, you know, I, I wouldn't guarantee that, but I think they've indicated that if, if really push come to shove, that they could, they could get somewhere close to that.
Yeah, but we'd have to terminate the contract we currently, we're currently under to do that, which would probably come with penalties.
Well, the last agenda item up, if we don't approve the, the increase, then Waste Management could terminate the current contract on us. And so I, I wanted to see if we could ramp up in time so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a gap. And it sounds, sounds like it would be tough, but we could do it.
I don't think they can terminate on us if we don't accept the adjustment in the rate.
Yeah, we can talk about that when we get there. I just wanted to get it on the record that they can pull it off in six months. And then I guess can you clarify, so like this morning, we threw out some old bar stools. And would that be something that I'd have to pink tag or do we have to put out on just a specific bulk day? How, how does that work?
So I believe that's going to fall under bulk trash.
Okay, and that's going to be once a week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks for your hard work and all the, all the memos and, and sharing this, the, the citizen survey specifically. I, I guess the, the other reason, just besides personally, I, I want to stick with the two times a week. We didn't specifically reach out in that citizen survey to change that time.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's too many changes at once. I mean, we're dealing with a five-year contract. We're going to look up and five years is going to be behind us. And if we find that everybody is half full. And we want to go to once a week, then we can, but, but I think just going to the carts right now is the, the right move.
Yes, sir. And giving credit where credit's due, you know, Lori and everybody else on this team, they, they've done all the work. I get to talk about it.
Trent, on, on the, on this contract, they've got, what, twenty hours, seventy-two thousand carts that they're going to have to buy? Steel dumpsters of twelve hundred that they're going to have to buy and twenty trucks.
Yes, sir. If we go to option two, I'm going to twenty-three trucks.
Going at that period of time, man.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of your question.
No, I'm, I'm saying that's a lot of consumption that has to be done within a period of time to schedule. You know, to get, to get all this going at one time. It's, it's, it's quite a bit.
Everything they've provided us show that they've got, you know, the, the financial wherewithal to move forward with that and that they've got letters from all the manufacturers and they're ready to produce for them if they are awarded the contract.
Yeah, I'm worried about the financial. I'm sure they got it, but I'm just worried about, you know, the, the number of things that they've got that they need to do and then hiring people locally that they said they was going to do higher locally and put an office here in Pearland to do that. Have y'all heard, talk any additional on that, Trent?
Yes, sir. So they actually have investigated multiple sites that are zoned industrial to, to take a look at. And that is their intent that they will stand up an operation here locally.
What, what do we have in place to, to? I don't know, basically guarantee that they'll do that? Hello?
Is that your answer?
Well, Trent, I'll fill in the, I mean, guarantee not, but you know, they're, they're, they're going, they're endeavoring to be with us for for at least the five years and they've said that that's their intention and there's nothing, there's nothing now, so anything that they're able to add would be a plus from that perspective.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, if we, if we approve this, I mean, we're, we're essentially going to be their largest customer. Well, they're on the line, why don't we ask them?
Yeah, and, and that's part of the plus is that they've said that they want us to be, you know, their standout, but as member Carbone said, they're on the line, so they can speak themselves.
Oh, we've got two other members that may want to express something that they, and give, give their opinions and then maybe we can have Frontier express, answer everything all at once. Or three other members, actually.
However, the mayor wants to conduct the meeting. I mean, that's.
Yeah, appreciate that. I, I just had a quick question. Most of my comments were covered. A, a number that really just stood out to me, I, just anecdotally in talking to people. Yeah, I, I think that twice makes sense. And especially given the comment that member Carbone said, it's something I noticed as well that we don't have any survey data to, to back up making that shift. A, a number that did stick out to me though, that I just wanted a little more clarification on was the, with the note, I think it was on the second page, that one trip of a, a garbage truck in clicks, the, the same amount of street degradation is nine hundred, or sorry, nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six car trips. I just, that's kind of an abstract. It, it's kind of hard for me to quantify what that means. Do we have any rough way of saying what that means in terms of how much more quickly that, that makes our streets need to come up to be, you know, fixed?
You know, I think that number was something that, you know, the engineers had come up with, it just is a comparison number to try to extrapolate that to how many years and so forth on a street, I think it'd be more conjecture on top of that, so. Can't follow up with that on the next meeting, but you know, that, that was a new number that as part of this frankly, that I'd seen and answer was it came from engineering. Trent must have plugged his computer back in.
I don't know what happened there. I'm on my phone now, so what was, what was that question there?
About the nine thousand, how, how would that means in terms of a, a street degradation that the truck versus car trips?
Oh, I mean, that's, my understanding is that, that that's just an easel calculation, equivalent single axle loading calculation that you do for the weight of a loaded garbage truck versus the weight of a passenger car and, and you know, that the, the impact of, of a loaded garbage truck is, you know, nine, as if nine thousand, almost ten thousand cars pass through there.
That's usually calculated on the eighteen wheeler, but you're right, that's FHWA put that out.
Yeah.
Eighteen wheeler is much higher than the ten.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, oh, that the ESOL is singles, equivalent single axle load. It's just a way of trying to determine how much a loaded truck will, would, would put pressure on a pavement system, but we already have, have roadways that are intended to survive garbage trucks that, that come twice a week. We wouldn't see, it would be very difficult to see that our streets would go from a fifty-year lifespan to like a twenty-year, thirty-year, forty-year.
Yeah, on, on the concrete streets, you know, the impact is, you know, kind of designed in, but you know, on some of our older asphalt streets, there's a bigger impact.
Well, those are screwed anyway, so.
Well, I'm glad to hear that sense.
It's going to hurt, it's going to help.
I'm glad to hear that since we're asking them to make this a partial home for them when they're going to have a bunch of trucks that are going to be housed here in Pearland that are going to be driving across the street. And if we think that we're the only city that they're going to be serving out of that, that location, I think we're, we're wrong.
Well, we can ask them that. I, I know that the locations that we're looking at are probably sized about to service us without a whole lot of ability to expand there, but we can ask them that specifically.
Trent, this is Woody. I've got a more serious question I want to ask of you and Clay and Darren. The company that y'all selected to do the RFP to go out for the proposal. Also, I see in this, this information that we've got here that they were the ones that made the recommendation for Frontier to the city. And I know that they, not only do they write to RFPs, but they also work with the other solid waste firms to do negotiations from the solid waste firm to cities. And what I'm concerned about, do they, have they worked with this firm to negotiate with other cities in Texas right now?
Are they working on behalf of this firm negotiating with other cities?
I mean, they do both of these, Trent. I mean, they also write proposals, but they also work with negotiations of other firms, with cities and the firms to negotiate contracts. And I don't know if they have ever negotiated a contract for a Frontier with another city.
So I, I understand. I was just clarifying the question. I do want to also clarify that, just like any consultants where we're involving them in a, in a bid or RFP, we ask them to provide their recommendation, but this recommendation you've seen here tonight, while supported by that, is truly the, the city staff that reviewed this RFP's recommendation. Lynn's on the call, so he can answer that question.
I'd like to have an answer.
Okay, there I am. Counselman, to answer your question, Solid Waste Farmers is a RFP procurement process consultant. We do not, though my career, before I started doing this, I used to do that, but that I retired. So in this consulting company, we only work on the behalf of the city in preparing the documents. We don't work on the behalf of any waste provider. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers the question because I know, I read the, I read the last thing on here where you're making the recommendation to staff to select this firm. And I want to make sure that you've not worked with them in a, in a negotiations with another city for them to be a provider.
No, sir. We came, as Trent told you, we came to this conclusion. Really as a group, my recommendation just happened to tie in with what the evaluations produced. And I think you're going to be, I think you're going to be happy with, now I do know all these people, you know, I competed against them for years. And some of the questions that have come up tonight, I don't want to overstep my position here, but I'll try to address a few of the things I've heard is the founders of this particular firm go back many, many years of startups of this size and larger here in Texas. And so that's very important. It's, I'm not as interested in the, the number of months someone's been around. I'm interested in how the, the owners, what, what is their, what is their stock in trade and what is their personal experience? I know these folks and they do have that, they have the horsepower to accomplish this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I know from looking, I, I've, I've followed them on Dun and Bradstreet and I've followed them in the other areas and, and looked at that, so. Since I wasn't aware of the people on there. And I know the people that, that head up the company have a longer relationship in doing this kind of work. But that has nothing to do unless they are, are very forceful on it, on the people that are driving the trucks and get it to trash. But no, no, but I appreciate you coming in and making a statement on there.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a representative from Frontier on?
Hi, hi, Mayor and Council folks and staff, really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Also, I'm Bill Killian, Vice President, South Texas. John Gustafson are my partner and CEO of the company is also on. So he's available for either one of, or for, either one of us are available for any questions you might have.
So I, I guess a couple of questions, give you a chance to respond. Pearland location, sounds like y'all have indicated that you want to start up a kind of a headquarters or, or at least a location here. Is that something you're committed to do, A? And, and if so, can we get that into the contract? Then the, the second question will be how fast, if, if we get backed into a corner, can we get, can your service be stood up in a six-month timeframe?
Yes, to, to this, to the time on the startup, when we met with city staff, they asked, we, we commended them on being, having the foresight to go out one year. And that was great because, for example, the Bolt Springs contract, that was a thirty-day notice. We started that sixty-five hundred homes. And that was fun and we got it done and did a good job with it. But we told Trent and crew at the interview that six months is our sweet spot for something this size. That's where you're, you, you don't, you, you don't want to go any less than six. And, and a year's great. And so ramping up with the timeline we submitted and the transition plan we submitted, six months could do it. One month, one year's going to be great. The, we are working our hardest. We've been boots on the ground for yard search once, working remotely on the computer, we've done a lot, but we went up and looked at one place. Unfortunately, it looks like, the good news for Pearland is multinational companies getting ready to sign a lease with that property on South Main. I'll be boots on the ground Wednesday to look at another property, so we're trying our darndest to be inside your city limits, inside your ETJ so that the, the city reaps the benefit of our business personal property tax, which based on these assets, Pearland ISD would see about a hundred and twenty-three thousand based on two thousand nineteen tax rates and our, our asset mix. So we're trying our best. I mean, putting it in the contract, we're open to that, but we, we'd have to be something available. I think personally that there will be something available. I feel pretty good about it. So, you know, for whatever that's worth.
Okay, well, thank you. If things proceed, then maybe you can be back on October twenty-sixth and say you got a, a letter of intent or something in place and give us some more surety there. In terms of the, the question Councilman Moore had, if or when you do have a Pearland location, do you plan on servicing other, other municipalities around us out of that location?
I'd like to bring, let John, one of the great things about Pearland for us, it is definitely, there's a lot of great things and why we're able to save so much money for the city. And John, if your, if your audio is working, I'll let you weigh in on that if you don't mind.
Yeah, thanks. Look, but first of all, we're very appreciative of this opportunity. Our focus is absolutely on starting this contract smoothly and we have done this many times. And, and I, you know, I think, I think Lynn Lantrick's comments with respect to, it's all about the people who have, who have done the work and we, and, and we have the, the, the techni, the, the legal, techni, technical entity status to comply with the RFP, but at the end of the day, I think what the city of Pearland is, is worried about is are these people going to be able to come in and start this contract and have it go smoothly? And, and frankly, and I'm, I'm, I'm really not trying to be flippant. I don't know why you would go with anybody else, because when you look at the resumes of our team, there's no one else in the state of Texas that started more contracts over the last twenty years. I mean, personally, I've been a part of delivering over a million carts to projects here in Texas and, and, and a couple of surrounding states. And if you, if you looked at the combined resumes of my team, you could probably double that number. So we, we very much understand the sensitivities around transitional issues. We, we are very much looking forward to working with the staff with work, working in the community in advance. Becoming a part of the community. Becoming a real partner in Pearland. And, and so absolutely, we're committed to putting a facility in Pearland. Now, look, at the end of the day, we, there, there's got to be a suitable facility and we, we think there is. And, and so that is our intention. But we, we can one hundred percent commit tonight to putting a facility in the area and we will, and we are working hard already to put one in the city of Pearland. That's our intention, right? But at, you know, there has to be one and, 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 and frankly, we could not, you know, you guys get it. We can't build a facility in a year. We can't build a facility in a year. I mean, that, that, that's not practical. So we have to find something that exists. But with that caveat and under the, under our, you know, umbrella of really wanting to be a partner with Pearland and be a real resource and a, and something that, you know, the community is, is proud of. And the way this, this is going to roll out will be a very positive event, but it is a big project. Now, to the question about what happens with Frontier's business after Pearland is up and running? You guys are happy? Hey, look, we're in business and, and I, you know, we have business in, in a lot of different locations around the state of Texas. And Pearland will absolutely be our focus. It will be our home. It will be our headquarters, frankly, in South Texas. But we will, you know, we, we're going to run our business. The emphasis will absolutely 100% be on servicing city of Pearland. You know, to the extent that we can be opportunistic and grow our business. I think you can understand that that's, that, that's part of the strategic reason for us in, in wanting to be in Pearland. So I can't, you know, I can't tell you, hey, look, we're going to come in and we're, and we're, we're, we're not going to service anything besides Pearland. And I, but I can tell you, we're going to come in and 100% of our focus is going to be making sure that we do this right and that you are happy. That's the, that's the priority. And then what happens?
John.
Yep.
This is Woody. Where were you up prior to this?
I, I was the Regional Vice President at Progressive Waste for 18 years in, in Texas.
I'm, I'm not familiar with them, where they located at.
Well, we were based in Fort Worth. Our headquarters was in Fort Worth. And I, I started there in 1997. Before that, right out of college, I worked for Waste Management in Houston. In fact, I was in Houston when Waste Management started the Pearland contract.
So, so you're, you're really known as a garbage man then, right?
Uh, yeah, you bet.
Hey, hey, one thing that I, I do want to ask you, you know, on a sincere type thing. Your price is relatively low compared to the other two.
Yep.
In there. And I hope this is something that you are aware of, that the price and the cost of, of doing business and, and, um, and the value of doing business meets your needs to provide that at that dollar amount and provide a good service for the city of Pearland.
Great point.
To see as being something to come in and buy a contract.
Yeah.
To do that, because I know that's, that's what y'all look at for your expansion. So I'm just hoping that that's what it is and you're going to find out. That, uh, city council Pearland is hard to deal with sometimes. So, so we asked a lot of questions and we expect good answers, you know, to, to come through. But, you know, with the differential in, in the price of this, you know, I'm hoping it's just not behind the contract.
Look, great point. And if you, if you don't mind, I'd love to address that because if I were in your shoes, that would be one of my first questions. And frankly, it's, it is largely related to the reason why we have started Frontier. Because what's, what's happening in the market? This is sort of a microcosm of what's going on in the stock market. And you see stock price appreciation and you see publicly traded companies that are finding it harder and harder to quote, create value for their shareholders. So their need to create a return on invested capital keeps going higher. So that for one of these big publicly traded companies whose have seen the value of their stock over the last 12 years go up three, four, five times. And they, and they have to have quarterly earnings calls, right? They're having, they're handcuffed. The only lever they have left to pull is price. That's why we, that's why I started Frontier. Because as a privately owned Texas-based business, these guys are opening a door for us to come in and do a great job with customer service and, and become a part of the community and still make a nice return on capital.
I agree with you. There's no sense in being a business if you can't make a profit.
Absolutely. It says, this, hey, let me, this is not about selling the contract. This is about building a business and, 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 and will Pearland be 15, 10 to 15% of our business? Yes, it will for a while. But I can promise you with the team we have and with the great reference we're going to have from the city of Pearland, that number will go down because our, we will continue to grow Frontier as, as we go on. And, and so we are so excited to be here tonight. And couldn't, and, and I told Trent in the interview, Trent said, John, what's your biggest challenge of starting this contract? And I told him you are Trent because frankly, once we get through the council with the approval, my guys and girls, this is what we do. We've been doing this 30 years. I mean, I go back to the woodlands in 1996, to McKinney in 1997, to Frisco in 1998, to Flugerville to, I, uh, let me tell you, I could tell you the war stories and I've done it. And I've taken cities from twice a week to once a week and I get it. And it's different in South Texas and it has another part. So I think all of your concerns are very intelligent. I think the, the, the dialogue that's gone on here tonight is on point. And we could do it either way. It, it is a big project. We have a very detailed plan. This is not our first rodeo and, uh, and we are, we're excited about getting started.
Well, John, I appreciate that. The only thing I wish is that we were in council chambers so we could look at you in the face.
Me too.
We wish that too.
Um, I'd say let's, I mean, look, let's not dive too much into means and methods. We, we have a, we have a contract that's going to be in, uh, performance based. Um, we want them to locate here, um, uh, closely, but like I said, can't build a facility in a year. We know it's not going to be open in 12 months from now. And if they happen to have, and, uh, you know, that's all the better for plan if they've got a problem. You know, I don't, I don't want to, uh, be pissed to death. We, if we, we feel comfortable moving forward with it, with the option that we have, with the franchise fee that we have. I think at least for me personally, I think, um, that's enough for us to move forward and we can, we can get them to draft the contract to review it at a future date. I just don't want to beat this thing to death and be here till midnight without making any progress.
So, so in that spirit, Mayor, I think, uh, Trent, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we've heard a consensus of, uh, uh, service option for carts twice a week and, uh, uh, confirm the franchise fee at 15% for both. And, uh, uh, bring back, uh, contract Frontier. Did I miss, not a consensus, Trent?
Uh, I believe, yes, sir. We have that on two times per week, uh, option three. Uh, I wasn't quite sure if we were there on franchise agreement, but I think we were. And then, uh, I know we heard a couple of things on, uh, that, that we'll, uh, review the contract and, and talk to, uh, Frontier Waste about. And just, you know, uh, just kind of, uh, uh, full disclosure, when they put their initial proposal together, they did say in or near or around the Pearland area. It was when we interviewed them that they, you know, thought they had a, a site lined up. And I, I still, you know, think they're going to look at sites here, but that wasn't, you know, something that they initially said was an absolute, uh, just something, you know, that I think would be important to us if they're able to make that happen.
If they do, maybe, but it shouldn't be integral to the contract. I think, um, I know that I, and I believe, uh, member Moore, uh, and I believe I heard two other members state that they were okay with the franchise fee. Maybe location, that's one less thing that we have to go back and revisit when this contract comes about. If they're smoothly.
I think we've got our, uh, marching orders to, to come back in, in a couple of weeks with our, uh, solid waste contracts. So we appreciate everybody's input tonight and all our participants. And especially the group I work with, our city staff, they, they really, uh, put their minds to this and worked hard on this. And, and, uh, it's, it's important to them because it's important to the citizens of Pearland and I thank them.
Um, I would have one other proviso to, um, on the contract, that the contract cannot be extended past the 10-year, uh, extended term. Um, that we didn't end up that each, after the 10-year term, it must be rebid.
I believe that's the way we have it set up right now is that it's got one five-year renewal period. Uh, we'll check that though.
I mean, I think it would be something more in the resolution as opposed to the contract, um, where we, we as a council are providing guidance that we are not going to, um, have long-term extended contracts that go on for a couple of decades, uh, for our highest value, um, a yearly contract again.
We include that, but, uh, any future council could, uh, um, make another resolution, something else. So.
High threshold for making that change or at least force them to address it. Uh, so they have to address the will of the council when the contract was initiated. I think that would be appropriate to put into the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and, uh, echo what, uh, Trent said about, uh, the, the process for the last nine months and all the different points we've checked in with council and appreciate your diligence on that. So, Mayor, and I don't think we have anything else on that item.
I think we might talk this out and I think we have, uh, some shared some good ideas. I think, uh, we, we made quite a bit of progress for those of us that, uh, uh, have not followed this in the detail you have. So it's okay with you, uh, uh, Clay. I'd like to go ahead and move on and agenda.
Sure.
Okay. Move to item number eight of a nice Councilmember Perez, give a chance to visit on this one.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2020 dash one nine seven. So moved.
We have a motion. I get a second.
More.
We've got more in a little second. Okay, we got a second. Council, council report.
So, well, Mayor Council, this is a, uh, project we identified through our capital improvements, uh, work, uh, for our existing public safety building on Cullen. We have a emergency backup generator. But, uh, when it was built, it was specked out and built to plan that did not provide, uh, whole building, um, backup. Uh, it's for, you know, certain parts of the building and it's not the full, uh, uh, HVAC system. So, uh, you know, with as many storms reliance we have and increasing, uh, uh, dependence on being able to operate all weather out of that facility, uh, wanted to, uh, I improved their resiliency and, uh, went out through a process and designed a, a full power backup system. I've done that and, uh, ready to recommend, uh, uh, McDonald's Electric, uh, for that work, uh, for the just under $400,000. Uh, that is, I believe, below, uh, what the budget was on that. So, uh, by next storm season, we should be in good shape for this. So nothing to add, sir.
Thank you. Council having a question or comment based on the staff report.
Yep, Mayor, um, I guess it wasn't clear when I was reading the agenda. Is this including a new generator and the, the switchgear to, to, to cover the whole building? Or is this just the switchgear?
Uh, no, sir. It's, it's, uh, modifying the existing, uh, systems there and adding what we need to, to take advantage of the, uh, uh, available capacity on the existing generator. So we do not have to hack a generator.
Okay. Is there any additional capacity to be able to service the, uh, new fire station for an animal service?
No, I believe this is pretty much going to cap out this, the existing generator.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question or comment? I remember when the, uh, there was, uh, I was expecting, uh, air conditioning and went out and it was out several, several days, almost a week. So this, this is a good, good move on this point. I think you, you should be building for the future like it's a lot of other areas. Any further comment, question for council? Eric, no, and, uh, Madam Secretary, I think we have motion second on the floor.
Member Carbone? Member Little? Member Little?
Hi.
Member Hernandez?
Hi.
Member Moore?
Hi.
Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
Hi.
Member Orlando?
Hi.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one nine seven.
Moving in our agenda, item number nine, Councilmember Carbone. I'm going to let you, and listen.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2020 dash one seven seven. So moved.
More.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Mayor, this is Member Hernandez again. I'm going to sit this one out as well. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So Mayor Council, this is, uh, something that didn't get decided last time. That's to, uh, entertain a, uh, request that's, uh, from our existing solid waste provider, Waste Management. They have an option, uh, for requesting a, uh, a consideration of a, uh, increase in their base rate, uh, due to, uh, circumstances beyond their control. That is, uh, and they've made the case for, uh, the increased, uh, volumes that they're experiencing. And so, uh, we've tried to, uh, reiterate the, uh, pricing and how that would roll through. And, uh, it's really council's discretion whether they, uh, would like to entertain this. Uh, you know, as has been stated in some other context, uh, Waste Management's been a longstanding partner with and, uh, vendor of the city. Uh, they've told us that, uh, uh, at least in writing, that they would not, uh, use that six-month cancellation. And, uh, if, if this were not to be approved by the council, but they are asking for your favorable consideration. Nothing to add.
Uh, Clay, you know, different, uh, during the period that they're talking about is mostly the, uh, uh, pandemic issues. And coupled with that was something that I, I, I admire that they have done is doing Laura and, uh, uh, Beta. Uh, we had quite a bit of, uh, work going on. I remember doing Laura, I think we've been raining, doing a heavy rainstorm. Those guys were out there picking up garbage and, and doing the job. And, uh, they, uh, and also we had the same problem with Beta when it came ashore. Uh, not the shore over here, but, but, uh, some of its rain came up and, and watered our flowers for us. But I, but I think that, um, they, uh, they did an awful lot more than they normally had to do because of the, uh, the, not only the weather, but also the pandemic. Right? So I thought I'd inject that in there because, uh, uh, I had to get rid of a bunch of stuff right in the middle of a rainstorm and it disappeared. So I'm, I just want to say it's a good, good move there. Council having a question or comment at this point?
I guess the, the comment I would have is I'm, I'm still not sold on why should we pass a, a increase in, in fee during a pandemic, even if it's because of the pandemic, um, onto our residents? I don't, I hadn't been convinced of that. Um, and I, 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 I get in the contract that they can ask for it and they're asking for it noted. We're taking, gonna take an action on it, but I, I haven't been convinced that this is, this is the best decision for the citizens. And I guess I, I'm, I'm open to hear the other side, but I'm, I'm really struggling. And it's not a knock against them. Great service. Um, but I, I, how, how do you look a citizen in the eye and say, well, I voted for that?
What, um, what, uh, options, uh, does Waste Management have if we don't vote to approve this increase? Is there anything they can do? Uh, you said something about exercising a six-month, uh, termination?
Right. That's their contractual, excuse me. They have a six-month cancellation. But as I noted, uh, they've, they've expressed that they were not intending, they would not exercise that for this particular case with, uh, the rate increase, if that were to be denied.
I, I guess.
They stated that they would not, uh, exercise that option even if we denied the rate increase.
That's what they told us.
In fairness, we have somebody from Waste Management that could make their argument that we can kind of understand why, why they're looking for this at this point.
We worked that last time.
What, what are we raising at the amount from us? 1775 now the request. What was it? What is the regular level?
Trent, you have it. The new number would be 1775. For the base.
Yeah, seventeen seventy five.
Is that right, Trent?
Yes, sir. The number requested by Waste Management is seventeen seventy five for the base. When you add administrative fees as well as the sales tax. What will be our customers' bills would be $20 and 30 cents.
Twenty dollars thirty cents.
Trent, were you able to rectify whatever? Lack of understanding there was between staff and Waste Management as far as.
Yes, sir. So, uh, you know, it just really boiled down to applying the existing. Price modifiers that are in the contract for fuel as well as the CPI. So. Basically the base rate you see there is with the fuel modifier having lowered our cost twice in the past two quarters. Or actually since the quarter starting in April of this year. And, and then it also includes the slight, very, very slight three cent reduction. In the rate based on the CPI being a negative, slightly negative CPI, uh, starting October one. So that, that's the base rate there. And then we just clarified that where Waste Management wants the base rate to be is that seventeen seventy five. And then we added on the admin and the sales tax fees just to show what people see on their bills. And I've also modified that to ask, request that that start November one based on where we are already being in October.
And, and we're, we're avoiding this level of complication in the future contract, correct?
Sorry, what was the question?
We're avoiding this level of complication for the rate increase, rate increase on a yearly basis in this contract. It's CPI only, correct?
So CPI only on annual basis. So the new contract will not have the quarterly look at the, the fuel cost.
I would just say, look, I, I, we kind of, we stated in the last contract, you know, everybody's in business to make money. You know, I, I, I would trust what Waste Management was saying. Uh, if they say they need this to be whole, but. I do agree with Member Carbone, uh, you know, for advocacy for our customers or the citizens of Pearland is to provide them. Equivalent service for the lowest price. The option. You're right. It's hard to justify it to the average citizen. So. You know, I'll, uh, I'll wait to hear from other council, but I'm not totally objecting to helping Waste Management become more whole. I do think they're working harder than they anticipated for this year, but. If we want to just provide the service for as low as value as we can, I don't think that there's nothing really wrong with that.
There's, there's a lot of citizens and a lot of teachers out there that are working a hell of a lot harder this year than any other year in the past and.
Yeah, I know. But it's not, it's not a fair comparison. If they had in the contract that they could revisit their salary, they would, they would enforce it. They're, they're just, they're asking for what they had in the contract. It's not, it, it's not apples to apples to say Waste Management's contract versus what a teacher makes. Yeah. Each and every year we have the, um, the PPOA come in and ask us for. Additional revenue because they feel like they have the capability, you know, there's nothing wrong for asking for what they have a right to. It's just a matter of whether or not we agree with it. And if we don't agree with it, we don't have to throw Waste Management under the bus to say, we don't agree with it. You know, it was in the contract. It's fair for them to ask. If we want to just say, look, we're going to stick with the value. I think. Let's just get to that point and then move on.
I, I think that's right. I don't begrudge Waste Management one bit for, for coming in and asking for this. I, I do think it's legitimate that they have more volume. But to the other points made, you know, everybody is dealing with a financial crunch right now. And I, I think to bail out. You know, one entity dealing with a financial crunch on the backs of other folks who are also, uh, you know, isn't. Isn't great policy. So, um, definitely no, no ill will on my part that Waste Management has done that, but would be against. The, the rate increase at this time.
All right. Well, that's three. Is there one more says no?
Uh, I don't know if you're counting me in that three, but, um, you know, a lot of businesses taking hits during this COVID crisis and. They can't raise their prices to maintain the same margin. So. Yes, Waste Management has a right to come and ask for it and I don't feel any ill will toward them for doing that. It's a smart business decision, but I'm a no.
All right. Well, if I count me as a no, and then that's four, so we can get, we can vote on it.
I'm a no.
Where are you at, Woody?
Well.
What, what's the increase about a dollar, a dollar?
We already had four no's.
It's a minor fee that comes in on this thing. And, and what I'm wondering, you know. Being, you know, they pay in 5,000 a month. To keep Pearland beautiful. And then on top of that, the amount of money that they make on the franchise fee. 14% of that dollar amount of a million and something goes in to keep Pearland beautiful. And they made a commitment to pay into a hundred thousand dollars and to keep Pearland beautiful. You know, so, so I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, you know, you're talking about a 55 cent raise. For one year. And administrative fee, which is part of that and the sales tax, of course, they get their 8.25%. So, you know, you're talking about a little bit more, uh, on this than the present rate of nineteen seventy. And they're not going to be back next year from where it looks like. You know, they're, they're out of here. And somebody else is coming in at a different rate. It doesn't make any difference. You've got enough votes right now to turn it down.
Yeah. So let's vote. That's, let's move forward. Start the next session to get to.
But having to look at this, you know, and, and what's right for the citizens and I've talked to Waste Management. So I'm going to vote against it also.
I may, we're ready to vote.
Madam Secretary. I think we're ready to go.
Member Carbone.
No.
Member Little.
No.
Member Moore.
No.
Member Perez.
No.
Member Owens.
No.
Member Orlando.
No.
The motion fails zero to six.
Well, that's in place there. Let's, um. Change our pace here a little bit. Moving to item 10. Mayor Council issues for city council discussions and I think we've had enough discussions for tonight. So. We leave it at that. Item 11. We have an executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.0744. Seven, zero, seven, four for personnel matters regarding the annual evaluation of the municipal court judge. And under section 551.074 for personnel matters regarding the annual evaluation of the city attorney. And at this point. We will recess into executive session at, uh, what's the time is this? 10:08.
Mayor, can you, uh, can you gavel, gavel us back in with the time that we're returning from executive session and reconvene us?
Can I do what?
Can you reconvene us out of exec session, uh, and gavel us back in, uh, at that time?
Can you do that?
No.
We're not in regular session, are we?
Uh, we are now, we are now in regular session, but we need to, that since we're coming out of exec session, you are, you need to announce the time that we are returning from exec session.
Yeah.
What, what time do you have on your computer?
Eleven, eleven twenty one.
All right, we're back.
Okay, that's, um, can I get back with that legally?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, uh, it's clear on the record that we have returned from exec session at eleven, uh, twenty or eleven twenty one P M.
Okay, uh-huh.
And just to David Little, I was able to get back in.
Okay, great.
All right. Moving to item, uh, new business item ten, considering possible action regarding the annual evaluation of the municipal court judge. And I think we'll handle that with a, as, as, uh, discussed in executive session.
Yes, sir. Mayor, uh, this is Member Hernandez. I'm going to combine ten eleven. I'm, I make a motion that we adjust the salaries of the municipal judge and the city attorney as discussed in executive session.
Okay, good.
Second.
Okay. Uh, uh, was that for the atti- attorney as well, did you say?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay, that was item ten and eleven, so that's good. Uh.
We do have a motion and a second, Mayor.
Okay, we, uh. Crystal, are you still here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Would you, uh. Do the honor of, uh. Recording that?
Yes, sir. Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye, and just to, uh, clarify, we're voting on both, uh, number ten and number eleven.
That is correct.
For number ten and eleven, uh-huh.
The motion carries seven to zero to adjust the salary for the municipal court clerk and the city attorney as discussed in executive session.
Right.
Crystal, that, that's the, uh, municipal judge, not municipal clerk.
Municipal judge, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Municipal court judge, yes.
It's late.
Moving, moving to item number thirteen of the business. There is none. Item fourteen is adjournment, which I shall do. At eleven twenty four.